Do it again. Okay, uh, welcome to Madison District Public Schools. Special meeting Tuesday, June first, twenty twenty one. Called to order. We will take um pledge of allegiance and let's start with Mr. Holcomb. Is he there? Hey, next is roll call, please, Mary.
Crystal Beaver. Here. Mark Holcomb.
Here.
Cindy Holder.
Here.
Deborah Ott.
Here.
Beth Scott.
Here.
Gloria Thompson.
Here.
And Rebecca Shambles.
He did give us notice that um.
She might be late.
I'd be like. With notice.
Okay, uh, moving on, public fundamentals. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside. At each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the board must fill out a request. Comments are not limited to three. Comments are limited to three minutes. School employees will not use this forum to discuss job-related topics. The Board of that accepts comments made during public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many informational sources that the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. And with that done, do we have anybody from the public who wants to be addressed?
Uh, Ms. Holder, Rebecca did arrive, so. You take roll call again. Or not, and I don't see hands up.
I I can't see any, I would just say note that she is now here.
That's what I I did, I put down note that she came in at six oh five.
There you go, we're good. Okay, and did anybody um have public comment?
I don't see any hands up. Uh, in the chat, you know, in the participants, I don't see. As of six oh six, I don't think, I don't see anything right now.
Okay. So with that, we're gonna move ahead. And we're gonna turn the meeting over to Dr. Rod Green from M A S B.
Well. Good evening, everyone, um, checking to see if I'm unmuted, you guys can all hear me? Yes, okay, thank you. So yeah, I'm Rod Green, I'm a consultant and um, we have set aside tonight to try to do some uh, what we're calling mediation um. In trying to improve relationships and improve protocols and and basically just kind of work on our governance practices for the Madison District Public Schools. Um. So can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so.
Oh, it was flashing, no, no, no.
That's just my fancy way of saying hello. Okay, um, so, so yeah, I I I would like to talk about some of these different reasons for having having this meeting. Um, and basically, we're just trying to, you know, do better job working together, uh, building some trust between the parties. Um, you know, we've got seven board members and one superintendent, plus we have the public out there. And um, and we really just want to kind of try to figure out how do we do a better job with building trust between all the parties? And then develop our path forward um, as we go. So that's kind of our purpose, and I guess I wanted to start out by just asking the board members and the superintendent a question, do you, do you want to get better? I mean, do people feel like? You know, there is an issue, do you feel like there, there can be improvement, what's, what's people's thoughts on that? Who wants to go? Mark? I see that hand.
Yeah, yeah, I believe there is an issue and yeah, it'd be nice if we could resolve it and work as a a group.
Okay. What, what else? Who else?
I'll go.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I think that this board um wants to work together as a whole, we want to work together as a whole board.
Okay, alright, Debbie, what do you think?
Uh, I agree, I think the uh, for the betterment of the board, the, the faculty, the students, even the public, that we we really need to, to work together and be a functioning board.
Okay. Anyone else? Rebecca? How are you? Good to see you.
Nice to see you, I think that, I think we need to get better. I think so that the kids can benefit, you know, from things that we discuss, I I think us kind of team building and becoming a stronger unit will benefit them, so if there's even a chance that these sessions will make school life better for the kids, and I definitely think we should do it, I'll be good.
Okay. Angel, what do you, what is your thought? As the superintendent?
I, I think we all want to get better, and I think we all want to do it because we want to help the district succeed. I think everyone is here because they want to see the district succeed and that they have a vision for what the district could become. And I, I share that same belief, because I, I believe the district could become more than what we are currently.
Alright. Crystal, what about you?
Um, I think it's more than a want, I think it's a, at this point, a need that we need to do better for our district and for our staff and for our students, more than just a want, we need to be a functioning board, so. I definitely agree.
Gloria?
I believe that we need to open better communication between each board member. Sometimes there's no communication. And we can't get anything accomplished if we're not communicating.
Okay. Cindy, how about you?
Yeah, I would say, i- if there's no hope, then why are we here? So I, I hope that all of this uh, energy is, you know, put towards everything. Um, yeah. Right.
Well, one thing I will say is that all seven board members are here. And, and the superintendent and, and that is appreciated, and I do work with a lot of districts where for one reason or another, you can't get everyone together and um and so I think that's nice to see that, I will say that I do feel like you all have more in common than you realize. You all have more in common than you realize. And uh, we have some new ones on the board, we have some uh, experienced ones, I, I will say experienced mark. Not old, right? And um, you know, so, so what's what's not to like about having some some young blood and some, and some uh, experienced blood, so to speak, and and so we have some ways of doing things that we've done in the past, and we have some new ways that we're gonna consider. And um, so I just really think that this is a big important question, and the reason I put it first is because I think people need to, need to want to do it, and I agree with with whoever said that it's, it's more than just a want, it's a need, we need to be better. But in order to get better, you have to want to get better. And, and so to me, this is really important that you're all committing to me that you want to improve, you want to do better, and so I'm gonna give you some suggestions, I'm gonna give you some thoughts. And we're gonna talk about this tonight. So, so let's start out with just between the board and superintendent. Let's talk about individual interactions between the board and superintendent, board members, individual board members and the superintendent. How are these occurring? And um you know, what should, how should they be occurring? You know, and I, so I wanted to talk about that for a little bit, so I'm gonna start with Angel, for example. Angel, in the last couple of weeks, let's just say, or maybe you can give me some other examples. How often are you communicating with individual board members, are you, are you seeing people or talking to people on the phone or on email, what, what's going on with individual board members? Uh, you're muted, you're muted.
Seeing people, not very often unless I see them at an event.
Okay.
Um, or if we're doing uh, for example, antigen testing that we typically do on Fridays, then I have Crystal and Rebecca there and the U- Teachers Union President, so we'll do that, but we haven't done that in a couple of weeks, we're starting that up on Friday again.
So how about email, how, how often do they email you?
Board members?
Yeah.
No, I, I, I don't think they bombard me with emails, I don't think, I think if it's something important, they'll email me. Sometimes they'll forward me information if, if they're getting um, if they're getting information, they'll forward it to me. Um, and then sometimes um, it's an FYI, but board members emailing me requesting stuff doesn't happen very often, as it gets closer to a board meeting, they might ask questions. But that's typical, that's what I encourage them to do.
Alright, so let me ask, let me ask the board members, um is there a, are you emailing uh, Angel and not getting a response, I mean, I know I've heard this before, that some board members don't get responses, but let's not go into that right away, but is there a typical thing that you do, like you email, somebody give me an example, who can talk to me?
Uh, I'll talk to you, Rob.
Debbie, go ahead.
If I have a question about something I've read in the, the whatever um, his updates or something, I'll email him first thing in the morning with a question, and within, before the end of the day, he has responded back.
Okay.
I don't, you know. I usually, if it has to be a question or something.
Question, not, not too big a deal. So, so one thing about interactions between individual board members and the superintendent is that it's important to keep all of the board members in the loop. So, one of my suggestions on this factor, Angel, is for, if you get an email from Debbie or Rebecca or Beth or anybody you, you basically would respond right away, say, got it, I will have a response, you know, this week. But then when you respond, answering, you should be sending it to the whole board. And, and so what I would not do, I would not like Debbie, if you emailed him on your email to him, and then he's responding on his email to you, and then copying the other board members. I would not do it that way, I would, I would take the email from you and then I would either put it in my update, or somehow respond to the whole board without singling out that you were the one that asked the question. Does that make sense? So my thought is, is that whoever asks the question doesn't matter. It's from a board member, and then the whole board needs to know. So, so let's say Beth asks a question. So then, and Angel, instead of you responding directly to Beth, you, you take that question, first of all, you do respond to Beth, you say, got it. I will research this and get an answer back to the whole board. But then you're responding to the whole board, basically, is what you're doing. How do people feel about that, do you think that that would be wise? What's your thought on that?
Does does that come into play, though, with OMA violations if we're responding to all?
No, see, see you would not respond to all, Debbie. Um, Angel is going to, is going to tell everyone. And Angel can do that, and that's no violation of anything, and all Angel's gonna say is that you know, I got a question this week about, you know, the carnival. And and so here's the response, you know, and so so you as a board member who asked that question would recognize that that was your question, but everyone else is going to be like, hey, this is just information for the whole board. So what we're not doing by doing that is singling out a board member. So then someone else on the board can say, oh yeah, shoot, she's asking all the stupid questions, you know, that type of thing. We don't want board members pitted against each other, well, why is she asking all the questions, or why is he asking all the questions? We don't want that, what we just want is for board members to be informed at an equal basis. Angel, does that make sense to you in terms of how a protocol to handle emails?
It, it makes sense, now what if someone responds back and say can I ask who asked that question, am I just, you know?
It, it's just not really happening, I mean, that's not really how you're gonna frame it. You might not even frame it as this was a question from a board member, you just might say that I was or this is might, something you might be interested in, or here's a question that I was asked, or here's some interesting information about the carnival, you know? I mean, you're, the way you frame it, you're trying to build the board. You're trying to help the board feel like a unit, and when you are singling out board members individually, that's not what we want. Does that make sense? So we want the board to feel like a unit, so they're getting all of the information, so when Debbie emails you that email on Monday morning, yeah, she might have to wait a few days to get the answer. But it's the answer to the whole board, and so the whole board is equally informed, it feels like they're all a part of it. Does that make sense?
Excuse me, Rod, I, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, when Mr. Abdullah gets our email, he's gonna respond to, I received it, or I got it. So that we're aware that he received it.
Yes.
So what if it goes two or three days and we don't get that response, do we send another email?
Well, let's say, let's, what's fair, Angel, for you to respond that you got an email, would you say a day? Would you say a couple of days?
I heard you say in the weekly update, now if you want me to.
Well, I'm, I'm saying two different things, Angel, I'm saying first of all, is a response to the individual that you got the email. So how long before you can?
That response, I could do the same day, that a board member emails me. Uh, um, I could just say, I'm, I'm a receipt of your email. You know, I'll be happy to put an email together with the information. Uh, I might not have the information all one day, but I'll, I'll be able to, that based on what the.
Yeah, so, so what I'm saying, a protocol would be and I mean, you know, within reason, you guys, but if, if you email the, the board, if you email the superintendent on Monday, I would say by Tuesday, you should have an answer that I received this. I'm on it. You, you know, look, check your Friday update, you'll, you'll see the research and response there. I mean, what we want to do as a board is we want to give the superintendent a chance to thoroughly research, understand and get the right information. And then as a board, we also want to have all the board members informed. So by doing it this way, if he responds, he got the email, that's number one. And then number two, by the end of the week, you're seeing that response, now obviously, if, if every single, if every single board member is emailing a question every single day, you know, that becomes more problematic. But I'm not saying it would be that way, I'm saying that this is the occasional time that you've got, something hits you on the Friday update. So you email something Sunday night. You know, by Monday night, you get a response, say, hey, I got the email, and I'll put something in my next update, and then, and then boom, on Friday, you see the response to that email. Does that sound okay?
So Rod, this is for current board agenda items, this is not personal things that you are researching on the side, right, because those take sometimes I'll get um, a lot of requests, again, for board agenda items or current issues, correct?
This is, this is basically what I would say from the board is, is just about any question from the board is, is okay. But if it's obviously about your own kid or about your own grandkid, that's a totally different deal. Right? So, when you're on the board, you're asking questions about district level stuff. So if you're asking something about the middle school wrestling team, okay. That's fine, as long as you don't have a middle school wrestler. Um, but if you, if you're just, you heard something in the community and you wanted to get the scoop, you know, then, then that's fine, I mean, it's a district level question. But alright, so the, the question becomes, are the questions too detailed, are the questions too in the weeds, so to speak? And, and that's a feel that you'll have to have as you do the work. If, if, if you start this protocol, you know, let's see how the questions go, and then and see, you know, what are the questions, if they're about board agenda items, yeah, absolutely, if they're about district level items, absolutely. If it's about what time is the recess at the elementary, okay, I don't know, that's probably not, not, that's too detailed, you know, it could, go call the principal to get the deep.
Rod, is, in the past, have been personal research questions that had nothing to do with agenda items or anything that we were currently.
Like, like what kind of a, what, when you say personal, what do you mean, like, like they were interested in the cost of the food service program, or?
No, things that were not on the agenda items, um, that I was advised by legal, that this this would be to gather information for your own personal information, not to conduct your business as a board member.
Okay, well, that yes, so I would say, like I said, if it's about your own kid, if it's about something that is not related to the district, then that's really not what we're talking about. We're talking about stuff that's related to the district. Does, does that make sense to people?
Yes, Rod, I have a part two to my question.
Go ahead.
So when, when a board member, okay, so I understand when a board member emails Mr. Abdullah, he responds back, got it, or working on it. And then he's gonna respond back to all board members and not giving out who sent him that question, correct? So here's where I think there could possibly be a problem um, with that, it's great, I love that, but here lies the problem. Somebody wants to further information, get further information, and often hit respond all. So then responding to all is okay if we're not voting on something or any, whatever it might be. But as we've all been taught, that responding to all at some point in a long, lengthy thread of emails, you could be breaking OMA, so if we respond, just respond to Mr. Abdullah, and then let him respond back to the entire board. And we should be doing that consecutively every email, don't you think?
Yes, you should, you should not be responding to all. And you should not be copying each other. You should not be doing either of those two things. You should be, here's what I would say, let me just say it again. You, you have a question, something comes up in your mind, you email Mr. Abdullah. He responds within a day, like, hey, got it, um, I'm on it, I'll put something in the Friday update. Then in the Friday update, you're getting that whole thing, you know, and that's, that's got several things in it. And it might have a couple of questions that were asked during the week, and it might just be i- items that, that uh, Angel has put forth. It might be stuff that's coming up on the agenda. It's a whole thing, it's not, it's not anything particular about the question. So theoretically, you are, you are getting your questions answered in a timely fashion as a group. And you're not singling each other out, that's, that's the plan. Does that sound good, you guys, Angel, does that sound reasonable, give me a head nod.
It is reasonable, but in the past, and I know we're turning over a new leaf, I was I was bombarded with, this was in the past, right? You asked me the question currently, and I told you, no, currently I'm not. In the past, I was bombarded with repeated emails and requests that were rather lengthy that, that had nothing to do with upcoming action items or agenda items, had nothing to do what we were currently doing. Um that were required a lot of research, and then sometimes the my response garden created um, a follow and a third and a fourth, and it was never accepted. And I didn't know how to proceed at that point, do I just keep telling you the same thing, and if you don't accept it because you fundamentally disagree, how do we then say, okay, this has nothing to do with any current?
Well, here's, here's my thing, Angel, and I, I mean you know, I mean, you could, you could always send something to me and say, hey, this is what somebody's asking, how do I go, you know, what, what do I do? I, I would be happy to support you on that. But generally, the way I believe is that board members should be able to ask just about anything. As long as it's about the district. It doesn't have to be about, about an upcoming agenda item or an action item, it could be about some future thought. You know, like, like, hey, I was wondering about STEM, uh, you know, STEM program, have we ever done any research on the STEM program? Could, could you put something together for that, you know? I mean, yeah, that one might take a little more effort and time and whatever, and maybe that wouldn't go on an update, maybe that would go on a board agenda for a report sometime. So the way you handle those trickier questions, you might have to, you might have to say to the full board, hey, I got this question, a request for a report on on putting together a middle school STEM program. And I wasn't sure exactly how, how to proceed. I'm thinking about putting on an agenda, I'll talk to Cindy about it, you know, and we could discuss it as a board. I mean, you literally can handle just about anything that the board throws at you. And, and I, I know that there's personal things that, that I'm not talking about, and I'm not sure all of the other.
I'll give you an example.
Alright.
I, I have, I have in the past received a FOIA request from outside individuals. They were rather lengthy in requests and costly and time-consuming. Um, that person didn't follow through with the FOIA request. But then shortly thereafter, I received a very close, similar request from a trustee, same information, pretty close in nature to the same FOIA request, now when I reached back to legal, they said this has nothing to do with that, and so this would be for personal, because what's stopping from from a public community member from bypassing any FOIA request going directly to a trustee and saying, hey, can you request this stuff for me?
Yeah, well, I, I agree that that can be problematic, and certainly, if, if a, if a question from a board member we, requires multiple levels of research and, and um you know, copying documents and so on and so forth, that's a different, that's a different item that would need, in my mind, should come to the full board, if the board wants to, you to spend the time on compiling that type of information.
Yeah, and that's what I'm talking about, those are the things that I'm talking about.
So I think, I think we have to decide among, as a group, that we're, we're talking about normal, everyday questions that are fairly, you know, answerable in a paragraph type thing, if they're lengthier than it's gonna be a different process, it's probably gonna be something different if it's, if it's something that is not like that. But I, I'm just gonna say that in your normal, everyday, you know, monthly, weekly type work, you're gonna have questions that are gonna come up. And you're gonna have things that you hear in the community that you wonder about. And sometimes you're gonna say to yourself, hey, I'm not gonna ask that, I'm just gonna let it roll, because that's Angel's job. Other times, you're gonna say to yourself, you know, I just kinda wonder what, what we're doing on this. And so I'm gonna toss it out there, so then you, you toss it out to the superintendent. Superintendent says, yep, I got it, I'll put it, I'll, I'll follow up on, in the update, and then in the update, you see the info. And, and that's a good process to keep the board informed and to keep people you know, from sniping at each other, that's, that's my thought. Other comments on that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I had.
Yeah, Cindy.
Um, I was just wondering, now it's definitely to go for phone conversations as well, or questions over the phone.
Yes, I, I think it should, I think, Angel, one of your jobs is to keep the whole board on the same page, and so so yeah, if one board member, so this is the story, I, I might have told you this already, but one of the districts that I worked with a few years ago, the board had a little uh, thing going on, and it came out that the board president and the superintendent both had kids playing baseball. And they sat next to each other, and they spent a lot of time together. And the rest of the board started to feel like the board president was more privy to information than the rest of the board. And so it caused problems, so, so one of the jobs of the of all of you and the superintendent is to try to, try to keep the whole team on the same page. So Angel, it becomes incumbent upon you So Angel, it becomes incumbent upon you. That if you're getting a phone call from Crystal or from Rebecca or from whoever. And and some particular questions are coming up. You you need to make a note and make sure you tell the whole board what's going on. And that's true for you and Cindy. If you're having meetings. And you're talking about things that aren't on the agenda or aren't part of the. Discussion because because you want the full board to know what's going on. So so Cindy, you're the board president. But you are you are still one board member. And you don't have the authority to dictate to to Angel anything as none of the board members do. But as a group, that's where you have your that's where you have your your authority. And so so sometimes what happens is the board president and the superintendent start spending time together. And then the board president becomes more knowledgeable than the rest of the board, and it causes problems with the board. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but there there can also be problems when and and I'm just talking past experience. Um, and I, this isn't anything new. My my philosophy is I will always be respectful. I will never be as friend. Um, I learned the hard way in the past that there's a boundary. So that's my philosophy.
Well, and that's fine. And and I'm I'm not saying any of you really need to be friends. But I do think that you all need to respect each other as board members and respect Angel as a superintendent. And Angel, you need to just be cognizant and aware of trying to keep the whole board on the same page. So that certain board members are not more privy and then certain ones are feeling left out.
I just want to make sure the board is okay. So if I have phone conversations. With any trustee. Are the is the board comfortable if I have a conversation with anyone? Then to say. In my update, I had a conversation with, you know, Ms. Holder.
So so Angel, let me let me stop you.
Oh, no, sorry, no names. Sorry, no names.
Right, right. I I'm saying like, no, you you don't. Single out a board member. You just say that I got this question this week, wanted to make sure everybody had the same answer. You really, you really try to protect the board. In this regard, so so if Mark is talking to you and Mark says, hey, what was the story with the football team, blah, blah, blah? And and so it's like, oh, that's a good one that I should tell the board, you know? And so then you you don't say Mark told you about the football team. You just say, hey, this was a deal about the football team. Thought everyone should know about that.
Excuse me, Rod.
Yeah, Beth.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Why does the superintendent need to take phone calls or text messages from board members? Why can it not be done by email unless it's an emergency? That all that should be that should stop.
Yeah, you know, that that's a good point, and that's another protocol we could we could agree to is that. You know, we are, we're going to avoid that type of communication. You know, I don't know what people feel about that. I some people are better on. On phone, you know, some people like that interaction face to face. Um, I'm certainly not suggesting. I'm not suggesting that people cannot talk to each other. I think you should talk to each other and socialize. But but when it comes to board business. It 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 comes problematic when when you're having too many outside conversations. And that that's kind of what Beth is getting at. So what what are people's thoughts on that? Do you do you agree that that's something that that would be helpful to be avoided? What are your thoughts? Gloria, you're nodding. Mark, what are you thinking? Do you care? Debbie?
I I would I would think it would all depend on on why I'm calling him. Um, you know?
Yeah, how often do you guys call? What 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 would you say? How often would you call?
I I'm not saying I call, but I'm saying like when we were doing the masks and stuff, I'm not going to wait. Gloria and I and Barb weren't going to wait on Monday for an email to find out how much material we need.
Yeah.
For student capital.
Yeah, there's there are certain. There are certain situations, of course, and I think what we're talking about is general protocols, and I think Beth qualified it by. Unless it's an emergency, unless it's something that needs to be done.
Well, Rod, if communication and if communication and emails get better. And we. Make that a habit of. Doing the emails properly and responding on a daily basis, those would get caught. So there really would. Because a phone call or text messages takes away from Mr. Abdullah had actually getting done what he needs to get done.
Well, let me say this. Let me say this, that. I was always unusual for me to get a call from a board member. I will say, I mean, board members are bigger picture. Board members are. Are, you know, not the day to day. So my day to day I get calls, but not. Board members are bigger, you know, so. I do think if you're calling too often, that would be a problem, but but the emergency, I would never say you can't call, of course. But I would also say it's probably a good point. To, you know, let's agree that most stuff we're going to try to do by email, and that gives us that protocol to handle. Is is everyone agreeable to that?
So, Rod.
Most stuff by email?
What one more? And so if Mr. Abdullah had receives a phone call or text message, should that be shared with the rest of the board?
No, no, again, we're protecting the board and we're we're working together. So. If it's a if it's a topic, then that that topic then is shared in the update.
That's what I.
Yeah, yeah.
Not not the person calling or.
Not the person, right.
Or the dialogue.
The topic, the the thought, the the thing that I shared with Cindy, I'm going to share with the whole board. I I always would talk to my board president about stuff, but then I would always share it with my full board. I don't want the board to feel like they're not in the loop. Okay, so so here's the thing to you guys, and I said this already, but I'm saying again, all board members are. Equal, elected, respected. You know, we need to get over this business of. You know. Certain members, and I don't know if it's here, but I see it once in a while. Certain members are in a clique. And other members are in another clique. Let's let's get away from that. We want to get back to this respecting each other for the positions that we hold. So let me go on to this. So let's let's talk about board meetings. How do you interact at board meetings? Are you on good behavior? Are you? Do you say things that you should not say? What's what? I know when you've been with me. I think you guys have been doing pretty good, you know, so I'm like, hey. You know, everything is good, but I know there's probably not. I when I'm not on, sometimes things might not be. Is is done like that.
I'll go first. So in the past, I absolutely have been upset. Because my questions have gotten unanswered. I feel like I. I'm saying in the past, not currently, because I go through the board president. But in the past, I have felt like. I'm not knowledgeable and it's hard for me to vote on something that I don't have the answers to or that I feel uneasy about. So I feel when I question. Whoever the question needs to go to. I'm not getting. My ans- my questions answered without some sort of rebellious or. Ah, me feeling attacked for asking questions.
People get defensive?
Yeah, people get defensive. And then also. If I ask a question to a certain person, it gets interrupted. So often I feel that. Our board meetings. Are not our board meetings sometimes. I feel that. The superintendent will. Add to to things. And it to me, it feels like. During those meetings when he's getting angry or upset or whatever, it's dividing the board. So I feel that our board president should be the one running the meeting. And when the superintendent's. Update, when he talks, that's his time to talk. And then from there, I think anytime that. We need to ask a question, it's our board meeting. Like, I don't feel he should be rejecting unless the board president asks him to interject.
Okay.
So I think that to me, in my opinion, honestly, that that's a lot of our divide. And it often bring it it brings that. Some some board members will say, well, I knew that or I didn't know that or and that's a divide. Like, the trust is it's breaking it. I it's at meetings, I feel like sometimes. You know, not everybody knows the same thing. I'm not and I'm not just saying myself, I think. Everybody on the board at s- at some point feels like they're they don't have the information fully. To to be able to vote and vote with confidence that we're doing the right thing.
All right, let me let me speak to a couple of things that you said, and then I'm going to open it up to the to the group. So I hear this sometimes about, you know, it's a board meeting. And it's not the superintendent's meeting. And I agree. I if this is a board meeting, there's no doubt about it. And um, the board has business. The board has protocols. The board president is facilitating. The board president, you know, decides some things like who to call on. And how to run new things and how to facilitate. But. One of the great aspects of being on a school board is that you have superintendent. Expertise sitting right there. And and so you kind of said this, Beth, and I'm going to I'm going to kind of paraphrase what you said. When Cindy calls on him, you know? And and so what I would I would like to suggest to you guys is that you should be using Angel. For expertise at the meetings. And I I know I've talked about this in some of our trainings before, but let me just say again. Let's say you have a topic. That is on the board agenda. What is wrong with Cindy calling on Angel? To explain some background about this topic that's going to be talked about about at the board? So Angel, can you please give us some background on this topic? So Angel gives a little background, then Cindy says, okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion? To to approve what Angel was talking about? Can I have support? Okay, now can I have discussion? Would anyone like to interject? Well, you know, Gloria, what's your thought? Rebecca, what's your thought? And so so the idea is is that you're always using Angel. I mean, theoretically, there's almost nothing that comes before the board. That is not being recommended by the superintendent. You don't do work individually. You don't do work in isolation. You do work based on recommendations and expertise that you're getting. Um, so what happens if there's questions? You know, should the superintendent be defensive? No, I'm just going to say, no, we should not be defensive. We should be trying to be objective and. Understand the question and then try to try to answer it. But you know, how are you? How are you guys asking questions? How is the interaction? So this is what I'm I'm getting at on this topic is. Are you guys interacting with each other with respect or is there? Is there eye rolling? Is there body language? I mean, I don't know how long it's been since you guys have been in person. Maybe you haven't been in person in quite a while. You know, how are the interactions when there are questions or or does it feel like it's just defensiveness? What's the thought?
There are go. There's definitely eye rolling and huffing and. Oh, here we go. Little like slide comments that are made throughout the meetings for sure. I think it makes it worse with Zoom because you can see everybody's face nice and close rather than in person where. Sometimes it might be a little harder to hide your face.
Well, I'm gonna I'm gonna just suggest on that one thing. Is that we we try to curtail that. We try to stop that. We try to just treat every single board member and every single question as like, okay, interesting. Let's hear what they've got to say. Let's listen. Let's understand. Let's try to walk in their shoes. I mean, and Angel, one of the things that Angel has to do, and I don't mean to pick on you, Angel, in these meetings, of course. But you have to try to be objective when you're hearing this question, when you're hearing a question about something. Um, and sometimes you might not have all the information. Sometimes the questions are not. Known because there's too too much level of detail. Um, and so it's hard for me without an example right in front of me. I know this has been a tough year. But obviously, before this COVID thing happened, you guys had issues. Uh, from time to time with different things going on. Um, so my thing is. No eye rolling, no huffing, no no sighing, just stick with it. Just stick with it. You're you're all board members. You're all equal. That's my thing. Does that sound right? I mean, what do you think about that? Debbie, what's your thought?
I I sat at the meeting. Without my face showing and I watched the whole screen and it's it's pretty amazing.
So I would like us to to stop doing that. I think that's a big thing to work on. It's a habit. It's and habits are formed by doing. You know, practicing and doing, you know, and just sticking with it and keeping with it. And and if we have a slip up. It doesn't mean we throw the whole baby out with the bathwater. It just means we all right, all right, we had a screw up. Let's try it again. Let's keep on the the path here. But if we treat each other more respectfully on the screen and in person. I believe the public will treat you more respectfully. And I think the whole image of the district will be elevated because of that. And I I don't like to hear like like one board member feeling like they're being singled out. And on the other hand. If there's one board member that's asking all the questions. Let's also be respectful in the way we ask questions too. So and I'm not I'm not saying I know anything about what's going on, but I'm just saying that I've been around enough that I know some board members kind of. Go along more and then others have more questions and then others are are fine, you know, so you've got differences of opinion. You've got different people on the board. Um, and I think that's all a good mix. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Now, Angel, talk to me about about feeling attacked when you're when you're sitting there as the superintendent, when you're getting questioned.
What I got off of this is. I I I need to learn. I'm I'm just as I'm hearing you talk, I need to learn not to take things. Personal, I I take this job and and anything that I do, I own it. And so. I need to put things in perspective that they're not attacking me. They're asking questions and. Um, ideally, what I would like is. Even if you feel like you have to ask the questions publicly, so the public knows you're asking questions. At least allow me to prepare. And and that's, I think that's what gets me upset because I'll ask questions. So I could prepare. I'll I'll ask the board multiple times. Anything I could answer for you on this agenda is rather big. You know, what can I answer? No one. I won't say no one. People do ask questions.
Yeah.
And I get it. I get it from their perspective that their constituents. If they don't ask any questions because all their questions are answered. It makes it look like they're just going along, so. But if. If the board would just give me a heads up. Can you prepare these questions or these responses for me? So when I do ask them. You don't say I'll have to look into it. Right? Because I don't want to be that guy that says, well, I don't have the answer for you because I didn't know what you were going to ask me.
Well, that's, I mean, that's that's a great point, you guys, and I want to say this. So the best practice, honestly, is getting the agenda on Friday or whatever. Reviewing it and then and then giving Angel an email or a call and saying, hey, I don't understand this. Number one. He he's going to respond to you. And in that case, Angel, I do think you should answer the question, but you're also then gonna, you're going to respond to the whole board that night.
Right, that weekend, I always myself.
This helps him be better. This helps him be better. Because even even as the questions come forth and they're easy. They might be easy questions that he knows right off the top of his head. He can put that in his background. When he's talking about the topic at the evening meeting. And then you can still ask a question, you know, sometimes like he was just saying. You can ask the same question that you asked him over the weekend. You can ask that Monday night at your board meeting. And there's nothing wrong with that because number one. First of all, he's prepared now. He knows the answer because he's already been asked the question. But number two, there's audience members that don't know the answer. And there's board members maybe that don't know the answer. And so we want the technique of. You preparing. You preparing and looking at that agenda, giving Angel a heads up on things that are possibly. Issues or questions. And then you, you repeat that in the evening meeting. So that everyone can hear it. Yes, I see questions from Crystal.
Um, I definitely agree with that. Oh, sorry, if we um. You know, give the answers publicly, because if I have a question with the board packing in front of me, chances are a parent in the room is gonna hear the same, have the same questions. However, there's sometimes when discussions happen. You know, somebody might bring up something that like you didn't even think about, so then you're gonna have questions occasionally that's not. You can't ask ahead of time because until discussion happens, sometimes you don't know exactly. Yeah, different things will pop into your head here.
I don't think there's anything wrong with that, Crystal. I think it's just the general practice of you're trying to give heads up to the superintendent of questions that you know. Are on your mind or that you've heard about. And, and if you do that, you guys are gonna be better as a group, and then Angel, as you're getting questions, yeah, you're not taking it personal. You're, you're being objective. You're understanding that there's questions out there and that this helps inform not only the whole board, but the audience that's listening. And um, so yeah, I think there's definitely technique that can be helpful there. Debbie, Debbie, Debbie.
Yeah, I just, just, I'm, I'm a little, I'm not confused per se, but. I watch the city council meetings and, and, and with the board meetings and stuff and. We get our packets early, we go through and we, we. Contact Angel and with all of the questions we have prior to the board meeting so that we can like, I don't want to say streamline our meetings, but make them. Well, I guess maybe. Effective and just have our, so basically what we're doing as the board is just our action items. Because we've already had our questions asked and answered. I don't know, um, I've just taken notes from the city council meeting, that's all.
You're, you're right on with that, it's just that it's not a bad technique to ask those questions again, or at least. Some of those questions. So that not only are you interacting as a board. But you're also, the audience gets informed of the same information. So obviously, if there's twenty five questions, that's gonna be too many. But, but especially on big topics, and I'm not saying asking questions about. Little topics, like all of the building reports or directory reports. You know, and all stuff that's below your level. You're being informed of, of work. That is. More detail than you need as a board. You don't need to ask questions about those, those things. Because it's already more detailed than you need, what you need to ask questions about is the things that you're deciding on, the things that are in your lane. The things that are board level stuff. So certainly there's some discrepancy, I mean, not, not discrepancy, but there's a differential between. The level of questioning that needs to occur when it's a building level report. So the middle school principal is giving a report on something. You know, do you really need to ask questions about what's going on at the middle school? I mean, my, my view of it is no. That is not your lane, there's, there's a level of. Administration in between the board. And, and so it's great to get the info. So does it make you look like you're not interested? No, I mean, there, you're getting these reports, I'm assuming you're doing some kind of building level reports at your meetings. And I'm not even sure what we're talking about, if that's even where your questions are. But I'm just saying there's a difference between board level questions and. Building level questions. And, and you want to differentiate between those two, and you want to stick to more of the systems level, the things that are at your level, that's my, my point on that.
Excuse me, Rod? I have a couple things. Um, okay, so we voted to have our board packets on Wednesdays. I don't know if you've seen any of our agendas in the last few months, they're lengthy. Our, our agendas are lengthy. And it's a lot of information, so if we don't get our board packets till Friday afternoon. If, so I, if I have questions, I don't want to send. Three emails, I wanna go through the packet. Write down my questions and then send one email. I don't want multiple emails, so if my, if I don't get through reading the packet till Saturday or Sunday. That's what I'm gonna send the email, but if I don't get a response back. But if, you know, if Monday's a crazy day and the superintendent doesn't get. To the emails because it's a crazy Monday, I mean, you're starting the week, it's a busy time. So. If we got our packets on Wednesday, we would be able to answer those questions and have them answered. Before the weekend and it wouldn't be bombarding him on Monday.
What's the, what's the schedule, Angel, with getting the packets out, are we not, are we not hitting the Wednesdays?
We hit Wednesday end of day.
Okay.
Not always.
Not always. There, there's times if we, if we're late, we let them know. Send out an email saying.
You're, you're trying, you're trying to get it out on Wednesday, though, for a Monday meeting?
Yes, I try to get it out Wednesday for a Monday meeting.
Alright. I'd have to look, I mean, I could spend some time looking at this aspect of things. Um, and look at one of your agendas, Angel, and just see what you're doing, um. And possibly have some pointers on that. But I think generally, Beth, you're right in terms of. You know. You, you don't want to send multiple emails, I agree with that. And I think that it's nice to send an email, it would be nice, I think, if we could agree that. That everyone is gonna try to get an email. With their questions before. Monday morning, you know. It seems like Monday is, it feels a little late, but. I don't know, Angel, do you have a, a thought on when is it helpful to get the questions earlier, better, I'm sure, but. When do you try to, if you get an email from a board member, are you trying to answer it that day?
If it's on the weekend and I get an email that's something that I don't have to gather information, I could answer from the house. Or clarify. The rationale why we're doing something or why at this time. That's something that just general information, I could respond. Uh. Probably within an hour, two hours of their email on the weekend. If it's. Can you get me more detail on this? I would have to wait to get into work, so we can lose those documents.
And Rod, the, the other thing to the agenda is. Public comments are at the beginning of our board meetings, which just took place. Like within the last year or so. So imagine being a parent. There's something on the agenda. But public comments are at the beginning of your meeting. Now, parents may or may not have, or community members may or may not have questions about stuff that. We talked about at the meeting, they wanted some clarification, so now after the. So public comments is now dispersed, they can't speak, and so often I get. Questions like, do you know more about this? Do, and I say, you need to reach out to the superintendent or board president. But wouldn't you think that public comments would come at the end of the meeting to be more efficient, so if instead of. Board members getting bombarded with questions. They personally themselves can ask the questions. If it's something about the school or what's on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I get it, Cindy, you had a comment.
Yeah, Beth, I can tell you from personal experience, we've done it both ways. In the beginning, then they say, um. It, they don't have all the information that they need, if you do it at the end, then there's, um. The thought that, you know, well, I would have liked to have spoken on that subject and. I get the opportunity after everyone's voted, so it really is kind of a double edged sword, there is no good time. Um, we try to let everybody. Um, with the agenda in front of them, if they had something to say that was relevant, it gives them the opportunity. Um, to address it and, and that's, um. I don't. I, I'm trying to remember the last time we did it at the end. Um, but we did try that for a while and, and it really didn't seem to be any better, so I, I don't know, Rod, what do you think?
Well, I've got a couple of thoughts, let me hear from Crystal first.
Um, I agree with having it at the beginning only because if, as parents coming in or community members coming in. And they see something, they may want to speak on it before we take our vote so that we hear. But I have seen other schools in the area such as Hazel Park where. At the beginning of a meeting, they set aside three minutes to give people to talk, and then at the end of the meeting, they also open it back up and give one minute. If anybody else has any like closing remarks regarding the meeting or, hey, I had this. Question that came up during the meeting, like Beth had said, so rather than. Us getting bombarded, they can just address the board. And Mr. Abdullah Had or Ms. Holder could respond. You know, not there, but over an email, over the next few days, so I've seen it done. I personally like that, I don't know how everybody else feels, but then it gives. Not the full three minutes, but just a minute at the end of the meeting for, you know, kind of their. Remarks on it.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say something similar, Crystal, that if, if people on the board felt like that was an issue that you wanted to try to address. Um, you could look at. Doing a second time, you know, I do see it happen with, with two times and I agree with Crystal. Um, usually it's three minutes and one minute or something like that, sometimes people will do. Agenda items or, and then anything else, so the first time is. For agenda items only, three minutes, and then the second time is for anything else, you know.
Hey Rod.
Angel.
Um. I, I don't know if we had joined before, but we had kind of agreed that. About an hour into uh, the meeting, if we could take a minute break for trustees, so I hate to interrupt, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're, you're right, and thank you for interrupting, because I'm never gonna remember to take a break. Alright, let's, uh, let's take five minutes, uh, how about back at ten after, ten after seven?
That's, that's required the first, or requested the first one to be ten minutes, and then anything after would be, could be shorter.
Alright, that's fine, you know, I'm good with it, hey, I'm Mr. Flexibility, that's all I can tell you.
There you go, and, and Mary, I'm gonna try to re-log in so I can see everybody.
Alright, I'll see you guys in ten minutes, fourteen after.
Alright. Mine still says waiting.
Mary, make sure you turn off everyone's cameras and mute everyone.
Yeah. I don't know why. This isn't working.
Mary, mute Cindy so she could handle her stuff.
Yeah.
And Mary, you're still recording, so do you want to pause it and make sure everyone's muted?
Uh, minutes at the. Beginning or ending of a meeting.
Oh yeah, the public comment time, so, um, so that, I mean, that is something that we, we could discuss as a group and decide, um. You know, currently you're doing one time at the beginning, I mean, that's certainly very common, but. If it's not meeting the needs, you know, then you, you can adjust it. Um, and it, it does require some discussion amongst the board to try to come up with that, though, too.
Right, oh, can it, can I just say? I know, uh, people are constantly, I hear, you know, we need to shorten, we need to be. You know, less than three hours, and I get that too, I'm a tad bit concerned about. Um, adding more to the agenda, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, that's a concern, and it feels like that would be another thing that we could work on is streamlining. Meetings or at least looking at those agendas, I, that is something that I could work on with Angel a little bit, just to see what's going on. Um, normally your board meetings should be, I would say, less than two hours, but. It just depends, like you say, if you're having a lot of discussion about things.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's, let's go on to, um, we, we kind of talked about this limiting text. And emails, but we didn't talk about among board members outside of board meeting. Um, and, and this whole interacting outside of board meetings, so. I think I heard. You know, it's not that you're all friends, I mean, obviously you're on the same community, but. One of the things that I would say is that you are on a board. And so your interactions are really meant to be more in the public eye. So if you have a lot of outside discussions outside of the board meeting. And you start developing, uh, thoughts and ideas and clicks. It's not good for the board as a whole. So I think generally we want to say you should be limiting your outside interactions among each other. Other than when you're at a board meeting. Now, I'm not saying you shouldn't talk socially and there isn't a question or two occasionally, that's certainly appropriate. It's just that if you are doing it too often. You are, you're hurting the whole board as a whole, does that make sense? And, and can we have some discussion on that? Are you doing that, or you do, you really, that's not an issue for your board?
I mean, I know I see Rebecca quite often at different events, because our kids are the kind of the same age. Um, not that we're talking board things, but just there as parents.
Socially, parents, all of that is completely fine, it's when you, which, when you start getting into the board business. That I, I start to wonder. Is it that productive to do that outside of the board meeting?
Right, and then like I'll see Rebecca or Beth, um. You know, different M A S B webinars, things like that, um, you know, the Open County School Board Association things. Um. I mean, but, I mean, I guess it could be considered board, but it's not like our board.
But if it's training, right, if it's training, if it's generic, that's all fine. It's the, it's the individual discussions about particular board items. That starts to cause the divisions among board members, is what I would say. So I'm just gonna leave it at that, that you should, you should limit those discussions, you should be limiting. Your texting between each other, you should be limiting your emails between each other. Um, it's just better practice to do that.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Um. You're talking to the board about this, but I really think the superintendent needs to be brought into this conversation as well.
Yeah, it's, it's the same with the superintendent, honestly, it's the same thing. Um, and we kind of talked about that earlier. But. Angel, what about it? Are you having a lot of individual discussions or not that, or do you feel like that's something that's going on?
I think people think. Trustees think is going on. More than it's really going on, and they're free, I, and I've told trustees this. Feel free to look at my phone, I save my text messages. You know, I don't delete my texts, feel free, but. I think. This notion of Angels texting for this person, or this person is texting, it's not like I'm, I'm busy. And. I hardly initiate a text, I hardly initiate a text, but sometimes texts come through, sometimes they're talking about their children. Right? So sometimes I'll get a text message that is not board business, it's their children, what I do not respond, or. You know, or they might have something, question about graduation, um. But I have no problem if the board says. No more texting, no more texting it is.
I would say, it's not, this is not an absolute thing. But it's a practice, it's a, generally, you know, you're, you're trying to limit. Your texting. With board members. Between board members because you guys work in public. And, and you're working as a group. So all of the individual stuff just generally causes issues, so it's not to say occasionally it's not appropriate, it is. It's appropriate occasionally. But if you're making a practice of texting the superintendent. Every couple of days about something going on, that's too much. And, and so that's the point, so it's the same way between each other. Does that make sense? So it's just, it's just kind of how you roll.
How, however, for example, a trustee sent me a text saying, I'm running late, I might be late. I mean, it's simpler if they're on the road, that's what I'm trying to say, sometimes it's a lot simpler. Then for them to pull over. Send an email and saying I might be late, however. Is I, my phone is district property, and I've told the trustees that. They're feel free as a board to inspect the phone.
Well, let's, let's just, let's stop there, we're not inspecting your phone, we're, we're talking about common sense here. And so yes, of course, it's okay, you know, for a, for a board member to text the superintendent, say, hey, I'm running late to the meeting. Absolutely, that's exactly what you should do, but it's different if the board member texts the superintendent and says. Hey, I'm concerned about the budget, I'd like it to be this instead of this, and I just want you to know that, that's my feeling, that's different, that's. And I just want you to know that that's my feeling. That's different. That's what I'm talking about.
That's why I'm saying.
Makes sense to everyone. That's, that's how I want you to roll is to, is to play that cool. Yes, Mark.
Okay, so. Let's say my wife and I are friends with a couple of other people on this board.
Yes.
All right, what if we want to get together and have a picnic? Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'd like you to have another picnic and invite me too, Mark, too. No, I, yes, absolutely. I mean, you guys, this is just, and I know it feels like. I'm setting up a bunch of rules. I'm not really, I'm just saying like, what makes for good board camaraderie? The, the social stuff is fine. There's no issues. It's the board business that we want to keep at the board table. Uh, Beth?
Um, I'm not talking about text messages or phone calls. I'm saying meetings. Meetings in the office, you know?
It's the same, it's the same, it's the same concept, Beth. It is the same concept. We should be limiting. Individual meetings with board members between the superintendent or between board members. It's the same concept.
Rod, this is, the reason I said all of this is. There has to be trust among each other, um, and amongst me that. I'm not having secret meetings with trustees. I'm not secretly meeting with anyone. My door is always open if someone stops by, but. People don't make plans to come by and hang out with me. Cause it, and there comes a.
Pretty boring here. Is it boring?
Yeah, well, it comes time where they have to trust each other. And that's why I said my phone is, is free because I've heard it said that. You know, sometimes people get suspicious that there's more there than there actually really is.
Well, and here's, Angel, here's, here's what I'm saying is that we're moving forward. We're not looking backward. And, and I think if everyone, the things, how do we build trust? We build trust by certain practices. And these kinds of practices that I'm talking about will help you build trust. So a few months from now and a year from now, you won't be asking that question. Because you'll, people will know that it's not happening. That's, that's the thought. Gloria?
Well, we're on this. Communication thing. What about social media? I, I rarely go on Facebook and I rarely even post on my own page. But I'll get a phone call from somebody, do you read what was on Facebook? And I'll go in and I'll look at it and I'll think. Why? I feel like these people are keyboard warriors. Having a good time at everybody else's expense.
Well, I, I do have some advice about social media. And, um, my advice is to. Watch, but don't get involved. You know, it's, it's like, social media is hard for board members individually. To be effective because as an individual board member, you have no authority. And so, so you get involved in this stuff and you try to answer questions or you try to understand what people are feeling. And you end up causing division on your own board and with, within the group and whatever. And it's just not a way to, to run this, to run the shop. The word, the board work is done at the board table as a board. And, and that's where the, the work gets done. And so. And so when, when things are going on, on social media. And people are getting involved, it just distracts from the actual work that needs to be done. So that's my feeling on social media. I don't even have a slide on that one, but that's, that's a good question because it is an issue that comes up. Yes.
I just, just had, had a. Something that happened. Thursdays are my day off and, and Gloria was going into the board office to get copies of invoices and. Our board packets were ready. She goes, hey, you want to, want me to pick you up? So I said, sure. So we go in there, we call ahead, Angel can give us our board package. I said, I wanted to show him a picture of my new grandchild or whatever. So we come out the back door and we're laughing. All we did was pick up invoices in our board packets and we're laughing. And we come out and there's, uh, another board member in the parking lot. And I hear, oh crap, busted. I said, busted? Why are we busted? We came in to pick up our packets and that's that. There was no secret meeting or, or anything.
Be, it should be no big deal. And I think as you, as you guys start working more together, that, that will be the case in the future. There, there is no big deal in going up and picking up your board packet. And there is no big deal in showing your grandkids or whatever. I mean, the, the whole point is. You're keeping the board business at the board table.
Right.
Everyone, if everyone's kind of nodding like, yep, I can get that, I understand that. We're limiting outside conversations with superintendent or among each other. We're limiting outside texting. We are trying to keep the board business at the board table. That's going to help your overall relationship. And, and then when you think about the board table. You're thinking about how are you interacting with each other? And how are you answering questions? You know, like Angel, if he is, if he is less defensive, if he is more objective, if he is. If he is understanding and walking in the person's shoes, if you all are walking in each other's shoes. You're going to interact better and you're going to get more information and, and be able to make better decisions. And so that's, to me, that's the key is, is respecting each other, limiting your outside stuff. And, and trying to just stay that course. Okay, so let me, let me go on. We've had some good discussion and I've got a few more things here. And we won't get through it all, but let's, let's talk about some different roles. So I mentioned earlier. About the board president. And I, and I just heard, you know, Gloria, you're the treasurer, right? You were talking about picking up invoices. So talk to me a little bit about your, Gloria, about your treasurer's role. What, what you kind of do as the treasurer of the board? With, with invoices and stuff.
We get our packet and in that packet is usually our, um, check registers. I go through the check register and I look at descriptions on things. If there's no description there, I will request an invoice. So I know what we're paying out because inevitably somebody will call me and say, what is this? And if I have the invoice in front of me and I, and I don't have a description even on my invoice. I'll pick up the phone and call somebody and say, hey, what is this? Because if somebody asks me, I need to know what we're saying yes or no to.
Gloria, are you feeling like you're getting the info? Are you, is it a pretty good procedure with what you're doing?
Yes.
And is, are you working directly with, uh, the business manager or who do, who do you get?
Well, when, when we first started doing requests for invoices, it was Ed Wenna, our CFO. But that has switched to the secretary at the board office. Because all of the invoices now are going through all of the other schools, not just through the board office. Which I don't necessarily agree with. It's harder for me to get the information because now she's got to track it down. She, I believe, gets the copies off of a system, but I'm not sure. But a lot of times if she doesn't have it, she'll put down a P O number. Well, that doesn't mean anything to me when I'm looking at the register.
Angel, what's your, what's your read on, on this work?
Uh, I thought we did pretty good about providing all the invoices. I don't think. We've ever not provided an invoice on. We don't pay a check register until the board approves it unless they're essential. They created that process. Uh, long before me because of there's some mismanagement issues previously. So now they request, um, they request, uh, invoices. And initially it was through me, then I said, you don't need to, you don't need to go directly to me. Feel free to reach out to the CFO. Um, and then we have the accounts payable person. So, um.
So my, my only thought was going to be, um. Is there a way that we just provide it? They don't have to request it, that this is what's provided each time for the thing? Is that what we're doing?
Well, we don't know what the requests.
Right, there, there are way too many invoices for them to provide us with every invoice.
I got you. All right, that sounds good. Beth, you had a hand up.
Um, so I think it's great going through Gloria. However, there are some glitches that I don't think is, is. Because of Gloria, she's answered, tried to answer every questions. I'm just going to use the last, uh, board packet. I asked for, I didn't see any of the attorney fees on there. There was no, we weren't paying out anything. I know we've used the attorneys. You know, all of our. So I had to ask Gloria, but we still didn't get anything. There wasn't anything on there and I'm questioning why we, why was that not on the check registry? So. I know we're going through Gloria, which is working out fine, but what do we do in those instances? Like there's, it's not on there. We know it should be on there and it was not.
I think it sounds like the system worked because you questioned it and then Gloria gets on it and finds the answer and then. And then resolves it, you know? I mean, it feels like that, that is okay, what you have set up. As long as you're getting the information from the office that you need, Gloria, it should be fine. Now, again, generally Gloria as the board treasurer does not have any more authority. She's only one board member. But she's, she's still been delegated with this responsibility of running down this stuff and understanding this stuff. To report back to the board, Gloria? Do you report back to the board or what? How do you, how do you report?
I report back to the board if there's something that I have followed for months and months and couldn't get an answer to. Then I'll do a treasurer's report, but typically if they have a question, I can answer it.
And then, and then is it on the board agenda for approval? So it's just like you, do, do you say, yep, I've checked these out and this, this is okay to approve?
Right.
And so then if somebody like Beth notices like, hey, there's, we had this, why isn't this in there? Then you would bird dog that down, right?
Right, right.
And so I think that that's fine. I mean, generally we want the district to be paying the invoices as they come. And so sometimes there might be a reason why you wouldn't do that, but generally that's what you're doing. But certainly it's appropriate for a board member to question Gloria and say, hey, I didn't notice anything on this. I know we paid. I know we had the service. You know, can you find out? And then they do. So I think, I think that sounds like it worked in that case. Um, let me go back to, um.
I, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
When I get questions like that, should I be sending something out to let everybody know? That I had a question about something or should I be leaving that up to Angel?
I would send it to Angel, but then Angel, now you are going to report out to the full board. So, so that's how that would work. So remember, Angel, if you get any questions, so whether it's from Gloria or from Beth or from anybody. You're still reporting the answer to the full board. So Gloria, once you got that question from Beth. Then you talk to Angel about it. Now Angel, it's on his radar. Now he's going to report out to the full board.
Okay.
So Rod, I have a question because, um, this ca, this question came up. Um, if the question is. I would also like my own invoices. I know that we're going through Gloria, but I don't want to go through Gloria. I want to get my own invoices. So.
So that's, that would be, uh, in my mind, that's, uh, up to the full board. To decide that. So I think you could, you could, uh, talk to the full board about that. You could put it on the agenda. But generally I would say that's a different protocol and so that requires board approval. For, for one trustee to get.
I would agree, especially, yeah, I would agree with your last statement, especially because Gloria was. Given, was delegated that responsibility. I would say, uh, we don't want to muck the waters up if we're trying. To, um, build bridges here. We don't want to be undermining anybody.
So, so Angel, how I would handle this, how I would handle that. Is I would say to the board member, hey, this is the process we have. If you want to. Invite a change to the process, you need to talk to the board president. And the board president then will talk to me about putting it on the agenda for full board approval. So that's the way that would work. If you get a request from a board member, that feels like it's out of your lane, Angel. So changing this board protocol is out of your lane. Right? You agree with that? So then that's a board decision. So then that goes to this. That goes to the board president to decide if that should be going on the agenda. Um, for board approval. And if the board president says, no, we're not going to change that protocol. Um, then, then really the only option the board trustee would have. Is to add a board meeting, ask the full board to approve it outside of process. And generally that's not going to be, uh, approved because it's not, not been approved to be on the agenda. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's not good practice to, to do those kind of things. Yeah.
We want to stick with the protocols we have. Now, now what about FOIA? You guys have had some FOIA requests. Angel, I've heard you talk about FOIA requests. Angel, you have a FOIA coordinator?
Yeah, so I have a, uh, preparer, which is our HR director. I'll, I'll get the full, I'm listed as the FOIA, uh, person where they make the request. And then I respond, letting them know that I received the FOIA. And then I typically will say a representative from the district will. Will reach out.
So, um, so this is a, a training issue that we could spend some time on. Um. You've got five days to respond. In that response, you can ask for 10 more days. You can, or not, excuse me, not ask. You can say you're going to. Provide a response within 10 days. Due to the timing and nature of this request. Due to the extent of this request, you know, we are hereby invoking the 10 day additional period. So it becomes a 15 day period to provide the information. You can, you can do things like request, uh, a deposit. You know, things, there's things you can do in regard to FOIA, but. But what we need to do is provide the same, every time, the same. Response, the same thing every time.
We do, we're pretty consistent, Rod.
Are you? Okay.
Pretty consistent with the same response to the point where sometimes they, we get mocked. But we are consistent with our response. We are consistent with our emails. We are consistent with our, with our documents, the. The process and the procedures. We are.
Do you, so Angel, are you the one that does the initial response or?
I do their initial response.
Okay, so what if you were out of the district for a week? What would happen?
I've never been out of this or for a week. Well, I, I respond. I, I.
Beth, you had a question?
Um, honestly, that's not really truthful because we had a community member, um. A gentleman just sent us an email stating that he res, asked for a FOIA. May 16th, I believe, and nobody responded to him.
And, and so on the website, Angel, you have these directions of who they're supposed to email?
Yes, we do.
And are, are people in the district trained that if they got an email from someone that they would forward it to you?
Who, who would get an email?
Well, sometimes the, like a principal will get something like, someone will request something from a principal. And, um, I used to have my principals know that they had to re, they had to forward that to the central office. Because we handled all FOIA requests. So sometimes people don't even use the word FOIA. They just use the word, I would request to have this information. And, um, and so it doesn't matter if they use the word FOIA or not, it's still a FOIA request. Is that, is that understood by everyone? So, so you, you still have to respond. And, and so to me, there's a little bit of training that might need to go on with. Several personnel in the district, just if, if anyone is getting these requests and they're just sitting on them, we would want them to forward them to you.
So what, what makes you think we, we need that training, Rod? Have you heard something? Because I haven't heard anything.
Well, I've, I've seen a couple of things that people have said that they have re, they have asked for something through FOIA and not gotten a response. Um, Beth, did you have a comment?
Oh, um, yes, I did. I'm sorry for the interruption here. Um. Wouldn't, okay, so. Why would that be the superintendent's responsibility for people in the district to. Send Mr. Abdullah had an email. I, I would think that he has an assistant, Mary Kennedy. And. I, I don't really know if it's Mary or Jamie handling the FOIA requests. Why would they come to Mr. Abdullah had and not just go to the assistant? Or whoever is handling the FOIAs? Why would?
All right, I'll let, Angel, I'll let you answer that one.
I mean, I have no problem changing the coordinator because I just respond, receive, you know, received. Um, I, I have no problem, but I, I know Jamie responds to the, you know. Jamie responds to the, you know, FOIA requests. I think that's an administrative decision. Um, but if the board would like something differently, I guess I'm open to it, but I didn't think that.
Well, I used to, I, I used to have, I mean, my secretary used to do it. I mean, I was the FOIA coordinator. So the superintendent is the FOIA coordinator by default in a, in districts, in school districts. Unless, unless someone else is designated as the coordinator. Um, and when you coordinate, it just, that doesn't mean you necessarily. Answer them all, but it, it means that you are coordinating, you're making sure that the answers are being provided and stuff. Um. And Angel, I've got a couple of things that I've used over the years in terms of response and stuff that might be helpful. So maybe, um. You, and that would be another thing you and I could talk about, just to look at. And what we could do if there was a better procedure. But the bottom line is. That you do have a responsibility to respond under FOIA and there are some, some rules about it. And, but you can, you know, you can require deposits and you can, and you can charge if people are being excessive in their requests. And I have had that over the years as well. I mean, where people are asking for all kinds of stuff. I had somebody one time that asked for. All the grant applications the district had, um, had filled out for the last 10 years. Well, I mean, how are you gonna find all that? I mean, it would take hours to figure that all out. And I mean, there's, one person asked me one time for all of the food service budgets from 1980 forward, you know? It's like, okay, so what are people doing? So, so from my point of view, you do need some common sense in regard to it, but. Angel, I think that this is something maybe you and I could talk about and just look at your procedures. Um, in regard to it. Um. Now, what about board meetings? Are you, are you recording all your board meetings? Are you, um? It sounds like you are recording meetings lately. Because this one is being recorded. Is that true? Are we recording everything?
I think we started recording two years ago.
Did you, I know with the pandemic, you guys have not been meeting in person, right?
Right.
And, um, so on these Zoom meetings, are you recording them? So what are you doing with the recordings, Angel?
So we, we had a, we had a, uh, a gap in between when we had a transition. And then we had one that was, um. Uh, very obscene that we had done Facebook Live that there was, um. Yes. So that one, we, we couldn't recover. Um, the other ones we recovered, but again, some of them are over 2GB in length. And so what we have to do. In order to upload them to our YouTube, um, link, it takes a lot of time to move them in, into that. And so. You know, for the most part, we, we have been posting them. There is a lapse in between. The last people accounting manager and this new one, but we started up again.
Are you, are you trying to post them on your website or no? It's too much information. It has to go on your YouTube channel?
We post them on our website as well, but we have a YouTube channel as well.
So it, does it take up too much space? I mean, do you have a protocol for how long you're keeping them, you know? That type of thing?
We've never run with, um. Where we, we came to, um, capacity on spacing. We haven't had that issue, so.
Okay. Well, my understanding, and this is probably a lawyer thing, but I do not believe that you're required to, uh. To keep recordings, but I know you, you're certainly required to keep minutes. Um, so you, you have your minutes. So like a meeting like this. It's just gonna be pretty short on the minutes, right? It's gonna be call to order, roll call. Uh, and then board workshop or something like that. I mean, it's, you, you're not gonna, there's no actions being taken. So one of the things about minutes is that you're required to re- to record all of the actions that the board takes, right? And that's how the board does its work is it speaks through its minutes. So remember as board members, you have no authority as individuals, but as a group, you do have authority. And so how do you exercise that authority? You exercise it through actions at board meetings. And that's why it's required to have the actions recorded along with the vote and being able to tell how everyone voted. So is that a hand I see up there with Rebecca?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm a little disappointed with our video recording and posting. Um, oftentimes we, um, have people who for, you know. Their kids are in sports, their, you know, prior engagements, they can't watch our meetings live. And then. They go on our website and our website, we don't post the, um, like written minutes. Always very quickly or promptly. And so they then cannot, and our video is not posted. So unless they were able to watch it live. They can't read our minutes. That those aren't posted. They can't see the meeting later because that's not posted. And then they're forced to go to outside sources. Of people who privately recorded the meeting. And I just think that as a district that is trying really hard to, you know, bond with the community. And bridge any gaps that there might be in trust or transparency. I think that we should be doing our, you know, due diligence to get these meetings. Posted within a reasonable time, maybe, you know, a week or two, but we don't have videos. I've been asking forms since January.
Beth first and then Cindy.
Um, so when Mr. Abdullah Had said that there's been a gap and all that, I don't understand even what the gap, because here's the reason. We have a webmaster. Which I believe is Jamie Thiel. We have an IT department. I'm quite sure that there's people in the district that could easily put that on the website. And I just, like, I, I. Agree with Rebecca. I just don't think it's fair. To. Not to have that available to them, especially now during Zoom. It's so easy to plop it over. And I see this happen in other districts. They have the meeting and the next day it's on their site.
Okay, um, Cindy.
Um, I just had a question about that because, um, it used to be that the minutes, um, until they were voted on the next meeting. Weren't considered, um. What's the word I wanna use, but?
Proposed, they're proposed.
Right, so, so what would be?
You could do some things. So, so you could, I mean, you, we could talk to the attorney about stuff like this, but. You can post. I mean, usually you don't post minutes until they are approved. I would agree, I would agree with that. Um, you're supposed to have the proposed minutes available within eight days of the. Of the meeting, I believe. Um, and, but they're only proposed. So most districts, I don't think post proposed minutes. They wait until they're approved and then they post them. Now, in terms of the videos, Angel, what's the, what's the timeframe for posting? Video of these meetings, uh, the recordings of these meetings?
So. With regards to that, we don't, we don't have a problem posting. I, I have a problem with. People taking clips, making a mockery of trustees. Or looping statements that trustees make over and over to make fun of them or. You know, whether it's me they're making fun of or other trustees they're making fun of. And they loop it over and over. Sometimes they add music to it. And it's all funny or whatever. Except it's not funny to the trustee that's being mocked or myself or, and so it's a double edged sword. We're trying to be transparent. But the whole transparency, Rod, gets taken and gets twisted. To fit someone else's narrative. So I don't mind posting the videos.
Well, let me, let me just ask you, I mean, what's your normal protocol for posting? A video of a meeting? I mean, you usually do try to do it within a week or a couple of days or what's?
When I had Sarah Muller, I think within a couple of days she was. Um, couple of days she was converting the file over and posting it. Um, and we don't have a problem now, you know, Mary, we got her own, um, Zoom account. We got her, you have to have a premium account in order to, um. To record and, and upload and, and all of that. So. She and I already had a talk. She's gonna be posting them. But I just wanna make sure that we're not just saying what we believe, but understanding the true. What's happening in the community with those same videos. And we all know what we're talking about. Those videos are. Making a mockery of some trustees and your superintendent. So we have to be honest with that part as well.
Yeah, so, and some of that is, is, I think will go away if we start doing better job with our protocols, but. I'm gonna just say this, Angel, this is what I think. I think whatever you decide, you should do it the same way all the time. And so if you decide that, you know, generally we're gonna, we're gonna have the recording done. And it's gonna be, uh, within, uh, 48 hours, we're gonna have it converted and then we're gonna post it. And we just do it the same way all the time. And the same thing with the minutes. We, we get the minutes, Mary, Mary does them. We look at them, you know, if we decide that we're gonna. Post proposed minutes, you could. Um, I think that's okay. You would, I would want you to check with your attorney on that. But certainly approved minutes. Can be posted the very next day. So once the board meeting's over with, like what I used to do with my, my secretary. Um, that next morning, Tuesday morning, we would be working on the minutes. She would get them done by 8 o'clock in the morning. I'd look them over. We'd have it done. You know, boom, the minutes are done. And then, and then we're posting the previous month's minutes that were approved the last night. So there's just all this checklist of things that we're doing the very next day. So that it's all up to date all the time. Now I will say that I do this work with a lot of different districts. And I look at a lot of websites. And I will say that about half the time I look at a website, I cannot find the previous month's minutes. I can't find the agenda. I can't find the materials. I look at, it's like, oh yeah, they haven't updated theirs since January. Oops, they haven't updated theirs since October. And I just see these protocols out there. And I just, I just think to build your transparency and build your brand, build your credibility. Same way every time, all the time, every time, every time, every time, same way. And, and you're gonna get good at it. You're gonna get better at it. And then people are gonna believe in you more if you do it that way. That, Beth.
So, when I, that, that's what I was saying, like, especially with the FOIAs, like. Is Mr. Abdullah Had taking, undertaking these tests alone? Because I believe he's running even our Facebook page. If he's doing all these things, that's taking away from what a superintendent. Should be doing, like people are in place for this reason. Whoever our web ma- manager is, his assistant, it should be. He should be relinquishing these things and trusting his own staff. He. I, in my opinion, I think he thinks we're micromanaging him, but. If he's handling the Facebook page and handling whatever, that's not. What we're paying the other staff to be doing. The other staff need to do their job as well. So whether it be Mary. Aduina, Lawrence, whoever's doing whatever, he needs to relinquish that and let them do their job. That's their job.
All right, that's, I think that's a point well taken and, um, and we can review some of that stuff as we, as we move forward. Um, I think as you develop these protocols, there's gonna be adjustments that you make in various, in various things. Other comments on this issue? So, um, so I did put in here, micromanaging. And what, and what, how do you have accountability for the superintendent? Without micromanaging? What, what about superintendent interaction with individuals? So we talked about that already. But what about this accountability for superintendent? What's the best way to try to hold superintendent accountable?
Hey Rod? If you, oh, you're not sharing your screen?
Oh, I'm not.
No, you're not sharing your screen.
Oh, thank you for that little tip. Thank you for that tip. Um, Beth, you had your hand up.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm mentioning these things, but it's just little notes that I have. Accountability is, like when we set the goals. Two things that I specifically had talked about, and one of them was a way of measuring. His goals that the board could see regularly. Like a tool. We talked about that. I talked to you about that the other day on the phone. You agreed that we did talk about that and that. That would be something that you and Mr. Abdullah Had would do, but I got. Uh, negative feedback from Mr. Abdullah Had on that. When I know that we stated that we would definitely have a measuring tool that the board could see with his goals. And when they were completed, because there's so many things going on. It's hard as a board member with all this going on. Plus we, we all have our own lives, jobs, kids, whatever. And.
So I, I think Beth, I think we will, Angel, we will have a, a, a reporting mechanism, a. Measuring tool of some sort for those goals. I mean, it's only been a month or so since we did those goals, so. I think we need to have some time to, to put that type of thing together. But yeah, I think. Generally, yes, you need to have something to report back on and have, have that. And I know we talked about that. Um, okay, so I was on this, uh, thank you for telling me I was not sharing my screen. Um, and I didn't have that much on here, but. I had this, this idea of accountability and micromanaging, so. So what's the difference between the two? And, and so what Beth was just talking about, to me, that's accountability. It's talking about, these are the, the goals that we talked about as a group. And so now how are you gonna report out back to us? How are you gonna report back to us? You know, what's the plan? Give us, give us that measuring tool. Give us something that we can sink our teeth into. So to me, that's the accountability piece. But, but, but what's the micromanaging piece? I mean, when do you feel like people are micromanaging? Cindy?
Um, and, and I'm gonna go back to the carnival because that was recent. Um, I know Mr. Abdullah Had felt that I was micromanaging. Um, I was asking because of things that had happened in the past and I've been out of this for a while. I just didn't understand the process and the protocol. Like I said, when him and I had a conversation, I was asking. It used to be that, um, the groups came in front of the board, not for approval, but more for exposure. Um, it. It got related back, I guess, that, you know, I wanted to be, you know, uh, uh, know about every dollar that was done. Maybe it was a communication error, maybe it was a misunderstanding, but there is a difference, I think. Trying to understand the protocol and the procedure. Are we using our, um, state ID correctly? Because we weren't in the past. I don't know that I find that to be micromanaging with the past that we had. I'm not challenging that they're doing it wrong or they need to do. I just wanna. Make sure, understand that we're following the right protocols.
Okay. So Angel, what, what's your perspective on that?
Um, I'm still trying to absorb all this. So do you wanna keep talking as I, as I process all of this?
Well, I, I wanted to say that. I think generally I don't mind questions. It's, it's, but the questions need to be framed in a way of, like you were saying Cindy, like. I'm not trying to tell you how you, how to do your job. I'm just asking about your job. I'm asking about what, what you're doing. So like, like on the wristbands, for example. You know, how are the students beginning, getting, get at the wristbands? I mean, that feels like it's pretty down detail in the weeds, let's say. But. Maybe it's important that people know that the wristbands are gonna be provided by, by the free and reduced lunch count or. We've got a, we've got a, uh, Title I. Gives us this, this way of determining what the poverty level is. And so that's how we're determining that. I mean, it's possible that a question that seems like it's very detailed, might have a generic. Uh, response that's pretty big picture. Um, so I don't know that it's necessarily bad. To ask questions from time to time, but I think you do it in the sense of, I'm just. Wanting the information. I'm not telling you how to do your job because. This deciding how the wristbands are done. Is probably more in the administrative realm than it would be in the board realm. If that makes sense.
Yeah. I was shocked to hear that we get 100 wristbands and it wasn't really even that we got 100. I guess. Um. I, I just wanted to understand the, the process.
Well, and that's what I'm saying.
Every child does on free, or every child gets lunch. So they can't use that as a measuring.
Yeah, well, I was just, I'm just tossing. Yeah, well, I was just, I'm just tossing out examples, but I'm, I'm just saying that the way you frame it as a board member, knowing that it's in his lane might, might elicit a better response and more cooperation between the parties here. If we know that some things are administrative and some things are bored. Not everything is bored. And that's, that's the thing about micromanaging is it starts to feel like everything is bored. You know, like, like even Beth saying, well, why doesn't he do it this way? Well, yeah, I mean, I see it, I see what you're saying, Beth, but also it's his, it's his job, it's his way to decide whether he uses his secretary or he doesn't. But there's, there's some, there's some validity to those suggestions that come from time to time. And as, as you guys build your trust more, I think those suggestions can be accepted more. Is like, all right, yeah, I'm looking out for your best interest, and this is, we're just trying to help things run. But but one of the things, one of the key things about micromanaging is this idea that I'm just trying to help. I'm just trying to help. And and as you try to help, you're almost always not in your lane. If that makes sense. And so I, I know everybody wants to help, and I know that that's a danger as well. You know, um, so we, I think we've got to stop ourselves from trying to help too much and let him do his job, and then we do our job, so to speak, if that makes sense. So Angel, your, your turn to talk. What are your thoughts?
I I have a lot going on through my head right now, Rod, so um in and I'm trying to be objective in an effort to trying to help. Sometimes we we are hurting our, the employees that work with me. In an effort to trying to help, um, it could be viewed that in your effort to try to help, you're hurting some employees. If I get pictures sent to me um with timestamps and things of that nature, you could look at it as trying to help. I could look at it in a totally different light. That, you know, or if you are um favoring one person. And again, this is the problem with a small community, right? Everyone knows each other. Everyone knows each other and everyone, um you know, has a friend of a friend and what have you, and in an effort to run the district, sometimes we have to make decisions that are not popular. And sometimes in an effort for trustees in helping, it ma- it makes things worse. And I don't know if that makes sense, I'm trying to be.
Well, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help you out here for a second and just say that it's, it's difficult for the board members to not want to get involved sometimes, and so they people, a lot of times they feel like, hey, I got on the board to be involved, you know? And so they feel that need, plus there's people that talk to them and, hey, you need to do this, you need to do that. And so part of it is really trying to respect Angel's work and let him do his job. And and then there are other parts where Angel needs to provide information so that that board members know what's going on. So there is a combo thing here that can occur. And I think that all parties' needs can be met. Um, but but it's seven board members and one superintendent. You know, and the superintendent is the one that's doing the day to day work. And so we want the board members to stay at a higher level. And that's why I say earlier, you know, if you're emailing the superintendent, you know, two, three times a week, that's probably too much. You're, you're at, you're, you're talking about things that are at his level all the time. You need to be stuff at your level. Um, I don't know. Other comments from board members on on that whole concept?
Hey, hey, Rod, it's also um eight oh seven, so maybe eight fifteen. Oh, you want to take a break now? Okay.
Yeah, let's take a break. Um, five minutes? Are you guys good with five minutes?
Yep.
All right.
I am.
See you back in five minutes. Be there or be square.
Mary, don't forget to pause record.
Okay, with everybody. All right. Gonna get back into it here, so we were, we were just discussing micromanaging and trying to stay board stuff versus superintendent stuff. It's a little bit of a gray area. And um, but sometimes it is the attitude in which we approach it, so that's kind of my point on that. So let me go back to sharing. See if I can share my screen again here. Okay, can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, so let's move on. Um so we, we talked about the email thing, right, with the responding, so we've got that. So what about, what about this? If you're getting harassing emails or combative emails? Oh, I did have a, I did have a note on social media. Um, so what about this about getting emails that are more combative or more harassing? How are you approaching that? Debbie?
Oh, well, that's what I put on my list here to ask you. How do we handle that? I mean, it's uh
Block them.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's almost hourly. It's gotten to a point where it's hourly emails, not daily emails, and it's nothing that we can that we can do anything about at the time. Do we answer these emails? Do we just let the admins answer the emails?
Yeah, I personally think that, no, as a board member, as an individual board member, you really don't have any authority to answer.
Okay.
I mean, you, you could say, got it, received it, you know? Thank you for uh your interest in, you know, our district or something like that. But in some regards, it's not even uh necessary to do that. I mean, um, the district can answer if it's a complaint, you know, there's, there's certain protocols that can be followed on certain complaints and stuff, but sometimes there's just not really much to do if if someone um is really just harassing you. Um, but I will say that if if there are complaints being lodged, there, there should be a procedure to follow uh the district procedure in terms of investigation or looking into it and responding. Um, and so that's, that's what I would look into is, is, is there a way? And so usually it is gonna be up to Angel to try to uh answer in some respect. Or um, or do an investigation if there was a complaint about an employee or something like that. Um, the social media thing, I I talked about it earlier about not getting heavily involved in it. And so where are we at with that? Is, is that an issue for people? Are you, are you hearing clear, or where are we at with that? So it feels like an issue?
I just ignore it. You know? I don't go on it, I don't. Because I know, I know what we're doing as a board, and I know what I'm doing as a person and uh and 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 the people on the board. I just ignore it. That way it doesn't blow your whole day.
Yeah. Um, other thoughts on that? So do you ever have communication with staff? How, how does, how does it work with the staff? Angel, what about you? You communicate with the staff occasionally, I'm sure. What about uh any, any protocols that you follow? Do you go through the chain of command? Do you, do you email all staff? How does it work with you, Angel?
Well, it depends what you're communicating and where the communication began, right? And and if it's a complaint from a parent that's going to me, I'm gonna ask, you know, for them to follow procedures. It, it all depends on the situation.
So how about board members to staff? Does any board member get involved with emailing staff or communicating with staff? I mean, the, the general answer should be no. I mean, there just isn't really any protocol for you to be directly involved with staff. Uh, whether it's principals or directors. I mean, the whole Gloria thing with the invoices, you know, that's different, that's a delegated responsibility. If the staff, if a staff member is complaining about something, they really need to go to the, you know, their supervisor. Um, and honestly, one of your, one of your jobs as a board member is to, to listen and redirect. So if if it's an email, you know, sometimes you might respond and say, hey, you really need to email someone else, or, or something like that. Mark?
I did read about to the principal there at the uh middle school, Ben Harwood, uh, because he did a real good job with the uh um operators engineer thing in his, in his school, and I reached out to him and told him, thank you for doing a good job. So.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's pretty benign, um, you know? And again, this whole thing, it's common sense on some of it. Yes, there was a question, someone?
Right.
Yes.
The board members that have parents in the school district, of course, we're talking to our, you know, the, our students, teachers and
Totally different, yep.
And, you know, principals and who, what, whatnot, secretary for Collins or what, whatever. I mean, so that's just, you know, but
Yeah, and and that's, Beth, that's all fine. But again, it's the same common sense thing. If you, if it, if it devolves into you know, some kind of question about board business or about district business, then you are deferring. You're getting out of that situation because you are one board member and you're trying to follow that chain of command. So it is all common sense, and certainly congratulations to somebody on retirement or you know, or talking to somebody about their kid and, you know, getting down the football team or whatever it is. Completely fine. It's just that line of board business and stuff that's, that's district business that you're gonna wanna uh let them follow the chain of command. Cindy, did you have a hand?
I, I was just gonna say, it's unfortunate, and I had not experienced this up until this recent, um um, when I came on in January, just how political the buildings are. I've never seen, it's always, there's always been a separation. This is professional, this is personal after hours. And I don't know how to get back to that. Um, you know, the, the us against them, me against you, and um it's challenging for everyone, but it, it's in those kind of instances, it festers daily. And, you know, until we can get a rein in on that, it, it is a continuing problem.
Well, and and that's kind of what we're talking about is, and I've got a slide later on in here about taking the high road. And I really think that you know, as you are attacked and as you are in uh, you know, some situation, I think your instinct needs to be starting to go towards the high road, taking the high road. And I will tell you, you know, for me as a superintendent, all those years ago, you know, I'd have people standing up there um saying stuff about me and and at the board meetings and whatever. And I consciously, and I'm not saying I was perfect, but I just consciously never never talked back. I never said anything. I always said, we think highly of our teachers, and we're, we're trying to work towards a deal, and whatever the situation was, I always took the high road, and it paid off for me. It paid off for me for years to keep those relationships. And and I think this is something that I talked to you guys about, you know, a time or two ago, was this idea that the relationship is more important sometimes than the, than the issue. And and so what I want you to do and think about as you keep doing your work here, and you're, and we are turning over a new leaf. We're starting new practices and new protocols, and we're gonna practice, and we're gonna work on them, and then we're gonna come back and talk again. But as you do this, always, always default to the high road. You know, instead of making that snipy comment back or that issue back, you say, okay, thank you, I appreciate it, you know, and you keep moving. And you be objective, and you take the high road. And I really think that that will pay off for you in the long run. And um, another concept I wanted to talk to you about was was this idea of being a group instead of individuals. So how, how do you do that? I mean, what are some ways? So I'm gonna just tell you some of the things we've talked about already that helped turn you into a group instead of individuals. And one of them is the way you respond to the emails that we talked about. You know, the way you avoid outside conversations and one-on-one conversation. You know, you do some of these practices we've talked about, and all of a sudden, you're starting to talk about things at, at the meeting instead of a, away from the meeting. And Cindy, the way you facilitate the discussion with the board. You know, as you get into a topic and you say, okay, now I'd like to hear from board members, and you get all the voices in the room. And you let them talk individually, and each one of you, as you're talking, everyone listens, and you don't do the eye roll, and you don't do the sighing and things like that. All of those little things help build your uh relationship as a group instead of as a, as individuals. And I think the way Angel approaches you guys also is going to be important to turning you into a unit instead of individuals. And this is why, Angel, I talked to you about um you know, responding to, to the whole, instead of responding on email to one. Those kinds of techniques will help build the team instead of making them feel like they're individuals. So comments on that? How do you become more of a team instead of a group of individuals?
Brad?
Yes.
Yes, um, I would like our board choose the training that we feel we need. Instead of what Mr. Abdullah needs. I think the board needs to come together and vote on some of the things that we need training on, and also attend the training on our own without having a superintendent involved in our training. A- again, it's he's involved in our board training, which doesn't make any sense why he would be at our board training. I'm not talking about this one, but I'm talking about you know, like, I really think that we've, this will be my third time coming up on the budget. I think this board should have been trained on the budget. There's lots of things that I personally have requested that the board be trained on, because I'm going on my third year, and my third year, we're still not, we've not gone to training. I think that the board needs to come together, be, come together on their own at a training without the superintendent, and let us have discussions and talks between ourselves publicly at a meeting, of course. Mr. Abdullah, I can watch the meeting or however, like everybody else, but I'm saying that I, I believe that this board, first of all, is far better than my previous two years. This board is better, and I think that we are more together, like you said, we are more together than we, we are aware of. So I would like to see more training that we choose as a board and by ourselves without
All right, let me, let me respond, Beth. Um, so first of all, you know, if you guys wanted to do something on school finance, I actually do that work, you know, I, I teach school finance, so I do a couple of workshops on school finance. So if you wanted to do something on that, we definitely could do it, but I, the one thing that you said that I don't agree with is doing it on your own without the superintendent. What you want is you want the superintendent to know what you're being trained in. You want the superintendent to be aware of what's going on. And I'm not saying that he needs to be, you know, necessarily actively uh guiding it or making sure you hear certain things. That's not really what I'm saying, because I understand what you're you're getting at is like, hey, we're the board and he's the superintendent. I get that part of it. But just like when I do the training for um board governance, I would never want to do that with just the board and not the superintendent, because so much of what the superintendent does affects the board's governance. And the same thing with like superintendent evaluation or school finance or all of this work that we do as a board, we need the superintendent to understand what the board's role is, and that helps the superintendent be better. So I, I agree with what you're saying about getting more intimately involved in your own training. I think that's good. But I don't think you should leave uh Angel out of it. I think he should hear it and be aware of it and understand it, and that helps him be better. And it'll help
He can, in the, in the, in the Zoom meeting or in a re-recorded video that's done. I, I'm just I I'm just saying that I think that that would bring us together. The board, in my opinion, it would bring us together if we if we chose what we thought we needed. And
Yeah.
We gather as a board could speak without
Okay, other other thoughts on that? Other comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I I guess I would agree with Beth and and my big thing and um is with especially with the contracts coming out. Everybody thinks every employee is worth a million dollars. Prove to me that we can afford the contract that you're bringing to us. Doesn't matter what we wanna give them. What can we afford to give them? And I think there's a huge difference. And um, I think um that Mr. Abdullah had and I had had a conversation and I think maybe I worded it differently because before he wasn't getting it. It it doesn't matter what Troy is paying their CFO. We're not Troy, we don't have kids. Um, what matters to me is what can we afford to give them? Not what they're worth, not what we think they should get. But three years from now, what can we afford to give them? And I think that's a training that that we all need and that's just the life skill that maybe we should, we should all be developing, every one of us.
Yeah. I don't disagree with that and and that type of work that certainly can be done. Um, what else? Other comments? We're we're kind of talking about how do you make the board into a group instead of individuals? So I think what I heard from Beth and Cindy is the idea of the board coming together as a group through some training. And and not necessarily the superintendent doesn't nec- doesn't necessarily have to be at every single thing that the board does as a group. Okay. I get it. What else? How how else can you become a group instead of individuals? Rebecca, anything? Cindy?
I I guess I'm just gonna address the elephant in the room. It's very hurtful when you see um people um on the internet and some of our cohorts suspecting, guessing um what we may have wanted or said. Um, I think that none of us should be discussing any other s- board member um anywhere uh in public. I I hate to see um it it's just hurtful, it's divisive and um no matter what we say here and now, if I go on the internet tomorrow and I look at a webpage and it was like uh and the, we see um and it's made to be hurtful and it's made to be um mean, um boots on the ground. That was something that was in a personal email that has been spread. Those kind of things and they and maybe it's entertaining, but it's not entertaining to the group when we're trying to be or to the individuals when we're trying to become a group. That kind of sharing is divisive. It's never gonna go well. And especially when you see it on ticket signs, honestly, with board members, family members holding picket signs. It it's hard.
Right. Well, and that and and so basically you're talking about social media type things?
Well, one is social media, the other is, like I said, and and it was, there have been multiple emails, but then, like I said, with this last picketing of the school board meeting and and I really don't understand, it's like fix the roof. No one ever said we weren't gonna fix the roof. I don't know how that became um such a divisive thing. No one has ever said ever we're not gonna take care of those buildings and we're not gonna take care of those kids. So I guess I'm very confused and maybe now is a good time for it to be addressed because I really don't understand it and I don't understand how we can be a group with those kind of things happening. I just, I don't get it.
Can you say something, Mr. Green?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I understand that it could be very decisive, but put yourself in the shoes of two brand new board members that are clearly the minority of this group that um was told those words and basically told to fall in line or leave if we don't have time.
But but what I'm saying is a conversation between you and I. If I then went to my personal friends who may or may not care for you and then on social media, they're using the exact words that you're in my conversation was. That's never gonna get better, Crystal.
No, but saying those words to begin with, they're never gonna get better either. Just because we're doing it behind closed doors and someone saying it in public, doesn't make it right or wrong.
But you shouldn't
And I'm I I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you that it's very decisive to put up. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, put yourself into my situation where I am told that somebody has had boots on the grounds for two years and for me to fall in place or leave if I don't have time for the board.
Yeah.
Well, all right, so let's hold on for that one just a second, Cindy. What else? Is there other comments out there? Um, Rebecca, Rebecca?
I just wanted to say that routinely in these meetings, people will claim victim and they will talk about how you know, they're mocked in uh city council by other community members or that things are said about them on social media. And many, you know, the mi- minority of us, we stay quiet and we don't sit here and argue about that, but it's happened at multiple meetings where people will make comments about how they're blasted on social media and they're run through the mud and how hard it is on them and we just stay quiet. But yet, we have some trustees' spouses going on social media and referring to Beth, Crystal and I as the Three Stooges. We have some people's husbands going on Facebook and running us through the mud routinely, but we don't come on here and say, you know, it's so divisive if, you know, spouses are doing this or it's so divisive that trustees are doing this. We remain silent because we don't drag it up in a meeting while other peoples do. And then as for the boots on the ground, that email was us being told that we should step down and allow somebody else who has more time to take our seats because, you know, this trustee had boots on the ground for two years. When the whole thing was about the fact that it was in a response to an email where we were simply just saying we do a lot, we are active, we're trying to make things better. You know, but things get twisted a lot in these meetings and said in a halfway story so that it looks way worse on us, but it doesn't fill in the community that's listening the entire truth of what just happened. You know, as the carnival, at the last meeting, it was stated that trustees were made to feel bad for not volunteering. In nowhere in that email that occurred, I asked Mr. Abdullah had if parent groups would be allowed to volunteer at the carnival because they're vying for the a chance to get in and help the school. These parents have been kept out for the past year and a half because of COVID and they're just begging to get back in to volunteer. So I said, would parent groups be allowed to because I'll sign up and I know a lot of other people will. Parents, you know, definitely trying to get in and, you know, as much as possible. And then it it was not in any way to make a trustee feel bad and it no, there was nothing, I honestly can't look at that email and say, I can see how that's how it was taken because all I asked was can parent groups volunteer? So unless it was a different email that just happened to have a similar topic and theme as the one that I was involved in, I don't know where that came from. But it's kind of, you know, if if four people say something, it automatically sheds light on, you know, three others who possibly did it. And it's like the whole story doesn't come out and we just sit here and take it. But then the community is getting half the story and we look like jerks.
Yeah, I I definitely think that there needs to be more communication. All I'm saying is, and I know um, I can tell you, my husband's not on social media, cuz
I'll agree.
He couldn't do it, okay?
I'm not saying it's true.
Not to be, no, I understand. All I'm saying is this and and I know your husband boyfriend has an opinion, Crystal's boy, you know, husband, not boyfriend. I don't know that. I misspoke, sorry, Crystal. Your husband. All I'm saying is, we need to be more cognizant, all of us of being, building each other up instead of saying you know, things are supposing, that's the thing that makes me crazy. Where did the supposition even come that we didn't want to fix the building? I I just still don't, don't grasp that. I I really just don't.
Well, the other thing too is another elephant in the room, superintendent has helped divide that. I've been accused of leaking information. I've been accused of starting this, doing that. So it works both ways from the superintendent and the board, so.
I I said, I I think we all in in that Beth is one of the reasons why I had asked everybody to do this today. I'm hoping and I've shared with you, I'm hoping we all can get better at this because everybody wins.
Well, I think there's one slide, I've got other slides in here and I'm um you know, I'm not gonna get to everything that that I thought I might talk about, but one of the things I had in there is assuming positive attentions. Assuming good intentions from people. Um, and it feels like there's some assumptions of bad intentions, you know? And that's, I think, what Rebecca was just saying, like, how did this get construed this way? This question was just asked. And so I do think that's the whole taking the high road, assuming good intentions from each other and 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 cutting each other slack. You know, giving each other grace. I mean, I know this has been a tough year for one thing. But there there is certainly some points in trying to give each other some grace on some things and and work together. I I I hear what you're saying, Cindy, about fixing the roof and uh and I also hear what Crystal and Rebecca are saying about being the new ones and Beth and whatever. I mean, I I can hear all of you. But I I still say to myself, why can't we work better together? You know, we all wanna fix the roof. Okay, let's figure out a way to do that. Let's let's throw that back to Angel and say, give us some some uh some ways of getting this roof fixed. What are some options? You know, and again, you you just keep working through the problems because you're working together and you're not making assumptions about negative intentions about each other. Um, and it's it's difficult work. It's not easy. It's not for the the faint-hearted really because it is hard to to meld three I'm sorry, uh, seven personalities together along with the eighth one, which is the superintendent. You're trying to build that team of everybody and it's not easy to do it. Um, but Debbie?
You're muted, Debbie.
Thanks, Mark. I just had something to say when this was going around. Um I think we need to take each one of us, has to take each one of us by fa- at face value. What we can bring to this district, what we can offer this board. Please, don't judge other people by how many committees I'm on or how many classes I took or um, you know, s- stuff like that. I am all for going to classes and bettering yourself and and you know, but don't judge me because I don't, because I don't participate. Um, with the amount of respect or lack of respect on this board was just amazing. Um I used to watch this board when Randy was here and the way the trustees, they never would have imagined to talk to Mr. Speck the way Mr. Abdullah had is spoken to, never in a million years. No, we just have got to to respect each other and I think we'll go further if we do.
Yeah, that's something that Debbie, we talked about early on and I really think it is a key thing is respect of each other and respect in the way we talk about it and the way we work together. Um, but I I keep going back to um you know, how do you do this? And part of it is just doing it. It's part of it's just just biting your tongue when that when that comment comes in or or just listening a little bit more when you when you wanted to say something. Beth, I see that hand.
Okay, so um but I wa- I wanna go back to um like when you said fix the roof. So that's another thing on our agenda. So you know how you have new business and old business? When we get our agenda, it's just this long list agendas and boom, seven hundred pages. Okay, I'm just using it cuz that was the recent big one. We need to have on our agenda, new business, old business or needs to be finished business. Cuz what happens is we vote or we're gonna, you know, if we ask Mr. Dul's, Mr. Abdullah had something and he's gonna get back to us or Adwina, she's gonna get back to us. We never come back to it. So it's like a constant running, like I'm forever looking through my notes, like did I, did we do this? Did we do that? Did we do this? Did we do that? Like, I feel like this is my full-time plus overtime job. Like, I've never worked so hard like I have been on this board. So that's one thing that needs to happen. We need to have new and old business. The other thing is, yes, absolutely, we need to have respect for each other. But again, I'm gonna bring it back to the superintendent because he's the leader. He needs to have respect for us. He needs to respect us when he's talking to us and especially to our community members. We've all seen the emails going back and forth and the rudeness. It's rude. So we need to we need to all respect, including him. That's all I have to say.
All right, that's that's good. Well, let me, let me show you this next slide here. I caught a couple of things here. Um so I don't know if this all follows what you were just saying, but this idea of responsiveness, I think, is important. And so we kind of talked about that with Angel responding and and then giving the answer to the whole board. You know, don't be defensive, you know, actually be open. Walk in the other person's shoes, try to listen for understanding. You know, that whole concept of listening for understanding instead of listening to respond? We wanna listen for understanding and then and then your answer is I'll review and get back to you. You you're kind of um in this boat of sometimes as a superintendent, you feel like you have to know every answer right away. And the real answer sometimes is to stop and not answer. And to say, you know what, let me look into that, I'll get back to you. And then you answer to everybody. And again, you you develop these protocols and that helps with with the whole group. So again, trust, how do you develop trust? I again, I got on on here, don't talk behind each other's backs. I mean, that's a, that's the one that you guys mentioned. You know, give and take, respond, listen objectively. You know, um, don't form cliques, you know, follow through. So this this concept of Beth's talking about the agenda about new business or old business or what have we done, what haven't we done? That's all a matter of organization, responsiveness, follow through. And and so whether you set up your agenda item with action items and defend and uh discussion items. I used to have three items on my agenda. Action items, discussion items, information items, you know, along with reports. So you you just have it organized, like information items, there's nothing needed. Discussion items, that's something for action for the future, but it's not gonna be action tonight. And then actions are action items and you do those and and that's the work that you do. So however you organize it, it needs to be organized so that it is easy to see what you're doing. Um, and that helps you develop, develop your trust. So that is a slide that I thought might be appropriate, yes?
You're right. Who who um who designs the agenda? Is that the board? Does the board decide what, how they need to see that or is that the superintendent? Because I I've seen conflicting things. So we know that that, okay, I feel that the agenda is not working for us the way we do it now. And I've been saying it. So how how do we come?
So it's usually, I, it's usually the superintendent that does it and then with the board president's consent. But um I did put this on my list as something I wanna work with Angel on is look at the agenda. There's two things that I wanted to do as I've been hearing the discussion. as I've been hearing the discussion tonight. One is the agenda, and then the other one was just the FOIA, just working on FOIA a little bit with you Angel, just making sure we got the right protocols. But, why don't you let us work on it a little bit, and then see, see what's going on, and then see if there's something that could be, could be done. But eventually, I mean, yes, it's usually the superintendent that's designing it, because it's the superintendent's, you know, all of the administrative items are coming to the board, you know, and it is, it is the board action items that end up happening, so. But yeah, usually it's administrative that designs the agenda. But let us work on that a little bit, and I think that's something that we can get back, get back to you on.
Yeah, actually, our, just, uh, our, uh, by law, say it's, you know, him and then me, so yeah, the two of us.
I'm just saying the outline of it, how it's set up.
Yeah, I, I've never seen it changed, so that's a good question Beth, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Uh, the, the answer is, it's the superintendent, you know, generally, that's the answer, but it's certainly up for, uh, changing, you can change it, and it can be changed. So if, if you, if it, if you don't feel like it's working for you, let us work on it, and see if we can bring something that's a little more, uh.
Hey Rod, I just wanna, I'm, I'm sitting here observing, and sometimes because one person might be speaking, or two people,
Yeah.
it might not necessarily mean
Be the whole people, right.
For all seven, and sometimes trustees might not be, you know, so, so talkative out there, but they might typically disagree with, with being said, so, as a, as a group, there's seven of them, there's seven trustees, and then myself, and I know some, you know, trustee feels like I'm not part of the team. I, I could respect that, but again, there are seven board members, and I would need to hear, and I guess I could send them an email saying, what, what do, what do you like about the agenda, what don't you like agenda? And I could ask, you know, individual stuff, that way, I'm not changing things because of one person, or two people feel that it's not working, and everyone else has no problem with it.
Well, that's, that's a good point, and I, and I don't mean to, to jump on just, just the comments that are being made, but my point was that I wanted to review it with you, and just see what's going on, to see if I can see anything, Angel, um, with my experience, um, you know, but if, if I looked at it and thought that, yeah, I don't see any issues with it, then, then I think we'd have to look at, you know, asking the group what they think, yeah Beth?
Okay, and this is a perfect example of how I feel attacked, because what my words were, was, in my opinion, in my opinion, I, I'm not saying that I'm asking for the entire board, in my opinion, I feel that it's not working. And I would also think that we would have two or three different versions, and the board could vote on it, what works best for you, or two versions of it, what works, and we would bring it to the board. So Mr. Abdullah Had does not have to be reactionary, because I have an idea, or I'm expressing that something I don't feel is working for me, it was in my opinion, that's what I'm trying to say. And not only that, it's very difficult to get things, okay. Previously, previously it's been difficult for me to even get anything to a board president to be put on the agenda, now I don't know how it's gonna go after today, how those things are gonna go, but um, and I've been holding off on even asking for anything to be put on the agenda, until tonight was happening, so.
Well, what, what I heard from Angel was a little bit more directed to me, Beth, in terms of making sure that I listened to all seven board members, and not just one. But I, I, what I'm, what I'm feeling like is if, and Angel, this is a little bit of how I roll, is it's like the lowest comedy nominee, or if the agenda doesn't work for one board member, I wanna try to understand why. And then, and, and if I can understand it, and I can tweak it, then I can make it work for, for all of the board, you know? And so that's, that's where I would look at it, I don't know about your agenda, Beth, and, and Angel. I would have to look at it to see if I feel like there's some issues that could be improved. Um, but I think what I heard is that we're, we are seven, we're not just one or two, and that's, that's one important point, Cindy?
Yeah, the only thing that I wanna say to that is, that's exactly why you're here today. Everybody has a voice, everybody has, if, if they have a concern, um, they have the opportunity right here and now to say it, and I would hope that they would share, um, and take this opportunity, cuz uh, I really did think that that was one of the reasons why we were doing this. So, um, just reiterate, I would hope somebody's not sitting on their hands, because they don't want to, to bring something up.
Right. Well, I, I'm also hearing from you guys that, um, you're looking for support, and I'm feeling like I can offer some support in some of these areas, but I might also come back to you and say, hey, this is very typical, it's fine, it's just how you've gotta, you've just gotta follow through with what you've got, Crystal had a hand up.
Um, I mean, if we're sharing out our frustrations, a frustration that I have is, I feel that we are overpaying with having legal sit in on every single meeting. It adds up. And so, I know that we've never, as a board, voted to have our legal sit down in every single meeting, he's even been at like trainings, um, I just think it's a, not the best practice to be spending that much money on that.
And, and I, I can respond to that. I know I said at the very first meeting, when I became president, that that was important to me. And everybody concurred, we didn't vote on it, there were no nays. And especially still with everything that's going on with the Facebook, and with the protests, and with, I think now is more important than ever that we are trying to do things the right way. And low and behold, with what's happening when we are diligently trying to do things the right way, I truly believe that it would be ten times worse if the attorney wasn't there to make sure that we're doing things the right way. We can take a vote on it, I'm just telling you as president, that's why I had asked you guys about it the very first meeting, and I didn't hear anybody say anything different, I think he's trying to support us, and especially with everything else, and, and, um, uh, Mr. Rod, you know, if, if you look on a couple of those websites, it's, it's, um, it's mean and it's sad, that we are funding ourselves, and so, it, that.
And see, I just look at it as, and I understand that we wanna do right, trust me, I don't wanna end up in any sort of trouble at all. But I just think, one meeting with him there, we could have taken a whole training for OMA through M A S B, and train ourself as a whole board, rather than just having him there, just in case we mess up. Why don't we train ourselves so we know what to do?
I, I think we all have done that, maybe you're assuming, I mean, I was on a long term, I know Gloria and Deb did some of those trainings before, because they're not on with you now, doesn't mean that they weren't on then. But you know, that even when we're doing it right, they're, um, copying and pasting little clip-its, saying that we're doing it wrong.
Well.
According to the state, we're not, so.
You're doing it fine.
We're not doing, we're not doing it wrong, according to the state.
Well, every, everything that I've seen you doing has been fine, um, but, and I would speak up if I thought that, if I saw, if I noticed something wrong, but we're not gonna solve that one tonight, but here's what I did wanna ask you, and, um, so I'm gonna wrap up here. But, um, I wanted to ask you, do you wanna continue this? I have, um, I had twenty-seven slides, they're not all, you know, fantag- fantabulous, whatever, I did have some, some stuff about conflict resolution, um, which we did last time, but we didn't spend a lot of time. But, we got through nine slides, um, and I have some more stuff, but it's, it's kinda the same kinda thing, it's working together, it's respect, I mean, there's, there's some conflict resolution, there's some protocols. Um, I feel like we made some good progress in terms of some things that I want you to try, like the, the emailing thing, and the, and the outside conversations, and some of that stuff we talked about early. But I guess I wanna ask you guys, do you wanna do another session like this, so, so far what we've got into this, remember we did a contract for hourly? So I think I told Angel that I've got like eight hours into this, as of tonight, eight hours so far. We said we could do up to fifteen, um, until we ask for more further approval, so what, what's the pleasure of the group? Do you wanna try to do another session with some of these kinds of topics? Would you like to continue?
Sure.
Do I see some head nodding? Yes, Mark, you're, you're nodding. So, what are you guys looking at, when are your regular meetings, uh? We've been kinda doing Tuesdays, you, when are your regular meetings, Mondays?
Monday, Monday.
How does, how do people look on the fifteenth, two more weeks?
I gotta look on my phone.
Alright, everyone can look on your phone, please.
I'm clear.
Angel, what's your thought? How's the fifteenth?
We have fifth grade honor ceremony.
What time?
From six to seven.
Okay. Is that, is that gonna be a conflict for some people?
For me, but i- if I, if I'm not needed here, I guess, or, or one here, I guess I could go to the ceremony.
You know, we could probably go for a while without you, I'd want you to ju- jump in though. I mean, we could start at seven, I know we talked about starting at seven with this one, but, um.
Yeah, definitely, the, the, the feedback that I got, any meeting going forward, Rod, um, has to be at seven, because there's a lot of, um, trustees that are, um.
Okay.
Yep.
There's, there's some of us that get up early to go to work, so.
Yeah, well, and we don't, we don't need to do, you know, we don't need to do three hours either, I mean, we could do, we could try for two or something. I mean, we could do seven, nine next time, if you wanted to. Um, I feel like it's just good to do, just kinda have a regular rhythm to doing some of this work, and see if we can work through some of these issues. I, I know we're not gonna do it all in one night, is what I'm saying. Um, so how about the fifteenth, that's seven? Fifteenth at seven?
Oh, that's seven to nine, correct?
Yeah, let's do seven to nine, and let's, um, and then in the meantime, Angel, I wanna spend a little time with you, just talking about a couple of things, and we can, we can look at a couple of things together, and see if we wanna bring that up to the board.
Okay, I just don't know how long honors, uh, fifth grade honor ceremony is, so.
Alright, well, 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 we'll get it started, who can start it, Mary starts it, and then you can jump in when you get there?
Yeah. Somebody has their hand up.
Yeah, Joseph's on iPhone. Joseph on iPhone.
Oh.
Yeah, that's Joe Urban.
Go ahead Joe, did you have a comment?
Well, I had a question, um, and I do appreciate, um, Rod, um, I think since you're moderating, I think I would kind of address it to the group through you, if that's okay. Um, one of the things that, uh, that I think is my job, is to also listen very carefully to the dialogue. And I think I heard something, but I wasn't able to see which, um, which board member, or member of the public made the statement. But we were talking about the Open Meetings Act, and somebody said something to the effect of, according to the state, the board is not doing its duty with regards to the Open Meetings Act. And I think if that was a board member who said that, and I, I, again, I missed who said it, I think it's important that we know if there are specific allegations of specific wrongdoing, or specific drawbacks, or specific faults, that those things are specifically articulated, not with, you know, you follow the breadcrumbs, and, 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 you know, I gave you some hints, figure it out, but that we actually know what the specifics are, because a statement, well, the state says you're not doing it right, that doesn't help the board to grow. Um, and it doesn't help us to understand what the issues are. So, I, I, and I'll wrap up with this, I think it's important that whoever raised that, that they specify specifically who from the state said what, to what specific question about the board's practices, so that we can comply, because we can't guess.
I think.
Rod, can I step in, since I was the one that said it?
Yeah, Crystal.
Um, I'm sorry if I didn't articulate it well, I was referring to a comment that was made in a previous meeting by a trustee that had said, um, that since we've been getting accused of Open Meetings Act, that you being in the meeting is worth its weight in gold, so that we do not happen to break OMA. And so, my comment was just saying, what we're paying you in one meeting, we could take a whole training thing, I wasn't accusing the board of breaking OMA, I was just going off of that previous comment.
Crystal, it wasn't even you, it was Debbie.
It was Debbie.
Debbie, and you, and I think she was saying we were in compliance.
Sorry, I thought it was me, sorry Joe.
That's what I was saying, Joe, um, is I, I like your presence at our meetings, but in the past, we were bombarded with OMA violations, and blah, 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 and we FOIA'd the state, and the state said we were not um, abusing our powers, we were not in OMA violations, that's what I said, we were not.
Yeah, yeah.
But to have you here.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah.
Joe, I was gonna say, you missed the not, so, you caught everything, but you, you missed the not, so that, she was, she was saying we were not in violation.
Yeah, it must have faded out, because there are, as the board knows, um, there are now um, people making police reports, and, and making criminal complaints, and going after the board, but not giving any specifics about what their issues are to the boards, that they can address them. And this is a topic that I think it's very difficult for a public body to, um, look for a needle in a haystack. Um, the only way a public body can address instances, especially when they're acting in good faith, the only way that, and, and there's, and, and Rod, you talked about division, there are cliques on the board that are copied on the emails, that the entire board is not getting. And so when you talk about division, um, I think it's important that, um, when we haven't talked about that during this meeting, I'm kinda surprised that we haven't, to be honest with you. Um, I think it's important that a board that's acting in good faith is not tried in the court of a public opinion through innuendo. We can take the high road, but we specifically have to know if people are making specific allegations, what those allegations are, we can't address guesswork.
Yeah, yeah, I, I appreciate that, Joe, and I, I think as we kinda try to move forward with the board not forming cliques, is, is trying to, again, you know, deal with the board as a whole, and, and so that's one of the things that we did talk about, um.
So, no, I know, it's just you're trying to put the toothpaste back in the tube over the last forty-eight to seventy-two hours, Rod, so.
Yeah, I know.
Um, and so we just need to be mindful, and I think the board, and each of the board members really should commit to not participating in destructive cliques.
Yeah.
Uh, but, at the same time, I can't help who emails me or copies me into something I didn't.
Right, but we did talk about not responding to it, and not, not getting involved with it, so that's, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Crystal. I have been, uh, copied, uh, over the years on things too, and it's like, yeah, well, I can't control somebody emailing me something, but I can control my response to it. So, um, alright, so you guys, I appreciate your attention, I think we made some progress, I hope you're taking some notes and thinking about things, and, and working on some various, uh, protocols with how we're gonna roll. So one of the things that I heard, is that if you have questions, you're gonna email Angel, and then Angel is gonna respond, hey, got it, I'll, I'll get it at the next, uh, update. And then, and then he's gonna respond, he's gonna put it in the update and answer, right, so everybody's agreeable with that protocol. And then, some of the other things we talked about was trying to not have as many outside conversations, trying to not have cliques, and, and things like that, so, we're gonna treat each other with respect, we're gonna try to move forward, starting today, and every day is a new day, we've got our, our, our goal is working together, and trying to better the district, and that's, that's how we're gonna roll. So, uh, Cindy, you are the board president, I'm gonna turn over to you.
Okay, uh, before I ask for adjournment, I just want a clarification, I know that, um, Beth has been, um, working through, um, excuse me, me and sometimes Mr. Urban, um, as far as Angel goes, I wanna ask Beth, um, are we, or, and Mr. Abdullah Had, are we good with trying to? Um, are we, or, and Mr. Abdullah had, are we good with trying to use this email protocol? Uh, the same with everybody or do we still need an intermediary? Because I truly, truly, um, want for this to be smoother for all of us.
Are you looking for me to respond or for Mr.?
Let's ask.
I guess maybe.
Joe, let's ask Angel. Angel, you feel comfortable with what I outlined with Beth, uh, emailing you directly?
I have no, I have no problem with responding.
Let's try it. Let's try it for a couple of weeks. Maybe there won't be any emails for a couple of weeks, but maybe there will be. Beth, let's get, let's get you in the fold and let's do the same thing we've been doing, that I outlined for everybody. Let's treat everybody the same. All board members are deserving of respect. And we want to just try to move forward with this, okay?
Are you okay with that, Beth?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, Cindy, you're, you're, you're at your meeting.
Thank you. Um, I want to just say thank you to everybody, um, for participating tonight. Um, and with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
And support.
Support it.
Deborah, uh, support. And Ms. Kennedy, can we have a real call vote, please?
Okay, Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless?
Yes.
And Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned at nine zero nine.
Thank you. Good night.
Everybody.
Good night, everybody. Mary.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
There we go. I'm trying to get out, Mary.
I can throw everybody out. How's that?
It's like, why, why do I still see you?